Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to welcome you all to the board meeting this afternoon. To access translation, please click on the globe icon below or at Dejawn. You can go to the corner of the room to get translation. We are heading into our closed session for tonight. Before we do, we are here to listen to any public comment there might be about our closed session items. The public gets two minutes for public comment per speaker. The closed session, closed session items that we're discussing tonight or today are Public Employee Discipline, Dismissal, Release and Complaint, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Conference with Labor Negotiators, Negotiators, And Public Employee Appointment, And Public Employee Performance Evaluation, and that's it. Staff, do we have any public comment? Thank you so much. Everyone, we will reconvene for open session at 6:30 tonight. Thank you very much. Dr. Hurst, if you'll read it for us, and then we'll get the video ready for next time.
Thank you, ma'am. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Jacheno, Bouwekma, Karken, Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Hurst. Now, we're going to do the labor and body recognition. I acknowledge that the burden of environmental exploitation and systemic injustice falls upon the labor of Black and Brown bodies in the building of this country and its institutions. I remember that Black and Brown people were born and died working this land against their will for generations. Also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over this. I also acknowledge the continued contribution of the labor of survivors over the centuries to today of all immigrant labor, including voluntary involuntary trafficked force and undocumented peoples in the building of what we refer to as the United States. Board, we're now going to go to roll call. Dr. Hurst, if you would do roll call, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, ma'am. President Smith Folds.
Good evening, everyone present.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Christian.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Phillips. Trustee Phillips is absent. Trustee Palkar.
Good evening, present.
Trustee Abdul Goparav.
Good evening, present.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're now moving to agenda item B5, Report and Ratification of Closed Session. Dr. Hurst, is there anything to report out?
Yes, ma'am, there is. Regarding item A2.4, the board voted to approve the appointment of Shirley Priestley as an interim coordinator at Cameron. By unanimous vote with one member absent, the vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Regarding item number A2.4, the board voted to appoint the appointment of Chang Sechow as an interim elementary principal at Highland by unanimous vote with one member absent. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, absent. Regarding item number A2.4, the board voted to appoint the appointment of Michael Hatcher as an interim high school principal at Richmond High School by unanimous vote with one member absent. The vote was as follows. Trustee Christian, yes. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. President Smith Folds, yes. And Trustee Phillips, absent. Thank you very much. Concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We're now moving to agenda item B6, West Contra Costa Unified School District Public Comment. Again, I'm going to read how to address the board. Members of the public are invited to speak to the board about any matter that is not otherwise on the agenda and is related to the issues affecting public education and WCCUSD. Public comment will last approximately 60 minutes. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. Individuals wishing to speak must submit a WCCUSD public comment form or if participating via Zoom, individuals will need to raise their hand in the Zoom app. Due to the Brown Act Board members, due to the Brown Act Board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Staff, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. Our first public comment is Jason Minton.
Hello. Hello again. Thank you very much. This is really, we've spoken earlier today. This is more of an announcement for the everyone else. But I met earlier with the board about reassignment of Principal Kibby Kleiman from Pinole Valley High School, from principal to teacher, which was a, that reassignment was made here in closed session month, two months, a month and a half. I don't know. Time flies. A little while ago. Since that time, Pinole Valley High School students and the parent community has been discussing and trying to bring attention to this issue. I met in closed session with the board today. They very generously gave me five minutes to speak, to present information. It was going over Mr. Kibby's 11 years as principal, providing positive feedback for his performance and the 19 years he worked in this district prior to becoming principal. And his importance to the students, his ties to the community, particularly in pursuit of opportunities for the district's kids. You know, there are a lot of kids at Pinole Valley High who are not from Pinole. They come in from other areas of the district. It's a highly valued school and largely due to Mr. Kibby's hard work, bonding the community and the teachers and the student body together. So in the end, I asked the board to rescind the devote to reassign him from principal to teacher. And I believe they're making some decision discussion. And I appreciate your time earlier today for making that presentation. And I just wanted to raise this issue in the public eye so that if there's anybody else who wanted to speak, they would feel supported that there were a few of us. All right. Thank you very much. Have a good night. I know it's a long job that you guys do here, but thank you very much for doing it.
Our next public comment is Amanda Foster. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm speaking on behalf of two parents who could not be here with us tonight. From Lakisha Dunn, parent of one Vista student. My child has faced many difficulties with learning and I was presented the opportunity to have her in independent studies. While I was very reluctant, I couldn't take my child coming home from school crying and wanting to harm herself because she didn't feel heard or understood by the teachers or counselors at the school she was attending. Since my child has been with Vista, she has excelled beyond any expectations of hers or myself. My daughter is excited to get up and learn new things and lean on her teachers who have the time and ability to hear her and help her work through her problems. I appreciate her teacher who reaches out to me and keeps me updated on her progress. Before my child joined Vista, I wasn't sure that teachers who care about their students' overall mental health as well as education even existed. We must keep our teachers at Vista because they are pushing our kids to excel and be better, not just in school, but in life. If it were not for the teachers and counselors of Vista, my child would not be here today. She would have possibly given up and quit school, leading her to quit at life. Ms. Malhe is an amazing soul whom my child has been working with. Every person I've spoken with has proven to me that I made the best decision bringing my child here. Now, my question to you is why would we take away these beautiful people when there are so many children that could benefit from learning with them? They're more than just teacher. These rare people are a huge part of our children's success. We need our teachers. From Maria Eisen, parent of two Vista students and one student at Quormatsu. I'm appalled at the news my 11th grade son's virtual academy teacher might be replaced with a less qualified teacher next year. This is our sixth year in the district with three kids and year after year, WCCUSD continues to make poor decisions. For my son in particular, to cut a teacher who supports, understands, inspires, and holds him accountable each day to his success in a program that is thriving and has a waitlist would be another glaring example of WCCUSD's longstanding inability to serve its students properly. Meanwhile, you have tenure teachers and administrators with very unsatisfactory reputations at in-person schools. Nothing is done about it. In order to attract more families to our district, you must support the program of teachers that are successful, not cut them. I am honored to speak on behalf of these two parents. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Tamara Shidlow.
Hello. Hi. Tamara Shidlow. I would just like to thank you all for considering allowing us to open a Swahili school. And I'd like to assure you, I'm also in approval of a Swahili school. But I'd like to assure you that we will have data showing that our children have improved as a result of attending the Swahili Dual Immersion School. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Simo. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Simo. I'm in fourth at Vista Virtual. And I don't want to lose any of the teachers in high school because that might mean my teacher has to spend time teaching them and that will take time away from me and technically taking away their jobs.
Next public comment from Salon Harrison.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. Can y'all hear me? Can y'all hear me up there? Okay. I would like to say I'm here today to talk about our Black and African-American students, if you guys didn't know. And I would like to say I want to appreciate Trustee Folds and Demetrio for having that community meeting that was very good. And I would encourage other trustees to do the same because we get to talk to you all, not just at a board meeting. So that was really good to then a lot of things. And I want to thank Dr. Hurst for having his staff support us in getting some of our answers, our questions answered regarding some concerns we had. So thank you. We did get some of those. Still a lot of work to do, but thank you for getting that process started. And we also want to ensure that, we want to know what's going to be happening next year regarding the budget and what resources and services that will African-American and Black children have when it comes to the LCAP. Like what are you guys going to ensure that it's going to be there for our children to change data around suspension and around, what's that, truancy? So we want to make sure that you guys have a plan going into next year to support our children and make sure that there is resources going towards those, towards the plan. Because if it isn't written, it's not going to happen. And if the resources are not there, it's likely not to happen. So can you please make sure that you all communicate with us as you guys are developing our next year's budget? Making time to meet with ASAP on how that plan is going to happen to include and change the data in our district and take our children out of red and put them in orange or yellow or green even. So thank you. I'm complete.
Our next public speaker is Jaskarat Carr. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, I am a student of Virtual Vista High School. I don't agree with this cub because my teacher, Mrs. Seale, has to leave that actually cares, helps, and checks in on me with my work and how I am doing. Mrs. Seale also helped me with any subject and gave me the understanding that I can reach out to her whenever, knowing I can get help on my work. My teacher always helps no matter what time or day. Virtual Vista is a good place for me because since I came to the school, I seen growth in my education, knowledge, and grades. Virtual Vista is the best place for me because I feel safe and I can concentrate more better. It will break my heart to lose a great teacher like Mrs. Seale. Lastly, to the board, please reconsider. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Gilberto Cooper.
Hello, I'm Gilberto Cooper. Good evening, Board and Trustees. I'm just here to support the development and the implementation of the Dual Immersion Swahili School. I think it's an innovative way to bring some educational justice to our kids that have been consistently miseducated. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Sandeep Surambanzi. Please unmute yourself.
Evening, Board. I'm a parent at Vista Virtual. I just wanted to speak today to speak about our teachers in the high school. If you go through with removing these three teachers, that only leaves two that are certified in overseeing high school studies. Two teachers teaching the entire school. The school has a waiting list and instead of taking precious resources away, the board should be making decisions and adding new high school teachers to allow additional students in. Supervising teachers of independent studies don't just oversee work and make sure students are completing their hours. No, they create assignments for our students. They help them one-on-one. More importantly, they understand the grade level assignments being given to our students. They're subject matter experts for high school level studies. And I want to express that they're subject matter experts for high school level studies. If you decide to remove these positions and go through with this, the virtual schools will be forced to go through a reorg. This means that unqualified teachers would be teaching our children subjects they may not specialize in. Going to a second grade teacher or even a sixth grade teacher and asking them to teach 11th grade science courses, you have to understand that this teacher is not qualified to supervise this course. This would be a major disservice to our children and to our community and other grade levels in the virtual schools. You would now be taking time away from younger students that would require additional support in their studies because their dedicated teachers would now have to shift their focus over to the high school. This puts a strain on current teachers and that may end up leaving their positions because of the stress. These teachers are already doing so much and spend so much time with our children in their current grade levels that it would be a disservice to your employees. I hope the board makes the right decision and keeps these teachers on staff. Thank you very much for listening.
Our next public speaker is Taylor Farham.
Hello, I apologize. I'm not a public comment. It's for later, under contracts. Apologies.
Never mind. Trustee Reckler is pulling the contract, so you would be able to speak. Okay. We usually don't do public comment under contracts because contracts are under consent unless a board member pulls the contracts. And once they pull the contract, then we do have public comment. So Trustee Reckler just said she is pulling contracts. So this is just information. You're good. You will still be able to speak. Hold on. Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
Thank you, President Smith. If you wouldn't mind clarifying that contracts will be at the end of our agenda. So maybe if she does have a comment, maybe she'd prefer to do it now in public comment than waiting until the end of the night if she really wants to make a comment on an item. Thank you.
So that's totally like, super smart. Once it gets pulled, it goes to the very bottom of the agenda and the very bottom of the agenda hovers around 10 o'clock. So if you want to go ahead and comment now, then we can hear the comment now. Does that make sense? We're good? Okay. Trustee Reckler, did you have anything else to say? Are you good? No? Okay. Ms. Taylor, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I have an 18-month-old and a four-year-old, so I really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Well, I am the very proud principal of Lincoln Elementary and we submitted a contract for BACR for our restorative justice coordinator. And I was told to be here tonight, that I was required to be here tonight in case there were any questions about our contract.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
That's a pickle because I don't know if they're going to have any questions because we haven't pulled it yet. So Ms. Taylor, we're going to let you get home to your 18-month-old and if we have a question, we're going to shoot it in the email.
Okay.
That's what I would think. I don't know, Fran. We're kind of just doing the best we can. So we'll figure it out, but we'll let you know if we have a question that only you can answer. Okay?
Can I just stay tuned and when we get to contracts?
You can do whatever you want to do. It's completely up to you, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our next public speaker is Sunny Singh. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Sunny Singh. And I like to preface this by saying that I am directly not a parent of any student that attends this school, but I am an uncle of three who attend this school. And when I heard about everything that was happening, I had to make it a point to myself to come out and speak because it just breaks my heart, right, to see that these teachers that are making such a difference in these kids' lives are now facing their jobs being lost. You know, I could see a direct impact on how my nieces and my nephew have all kind of changed as their personalities and as they got older. And I see that it's a direct reflection of not only their home leadership, which is with their parents, but also the leadership that they're taking at school, which is from their teachers. And having the right teacher, especially growing up in the inner cities of San Francisco and, you know, going to public high school out here, I could tell you that I didn't grow up with these resources. I didn't grow up having all this catered knowledge that my nieces and my nephew are having. And I could see a direct difference that it makes when I personally didn't have that versus now them having it in front of them and seeing how their characters are now developing and how much they love and care for their teachers just because they feel that love and respect is reciprocated to them through their teachers. So I strongly suggest and I strongly encourage the board to go ahead and look at other ways of approaching this matter rather than, you know, just rather than cutting off these teachers, especially the ones that make a difference. Especially the ones that are doing extra overtime to go ahead and make sure that the child understands that what their assignment is and how it actually impacts their life long-term. These types of teachers don't come along very often and I strongly suggest reallocating ways on making sure that they stay with the people that love them. So, thank you.
Our next public speaker is Daisy S. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm a student from Vista Virtual High School. I can't explain how frustrated I am about this whole situation. We need these teachers. Our teachers don't just supervise the students here at Vista. They give their students one-on-one help. They're experts in the subjects that we learn. And when we need help on an assignment, they're there right away to break it down for us. By making this decision, you are only thinking about the money being spent, but you're doing no favor for the families in this community. I'm sure you can take other unnecessary resources away instead of our teachers. Just as I said last time, please rethink your decision. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jean Kinsner. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Board. I would like for the board to consider and create a way for staff to give feedback to principals and other groups that interact with the staff and the students. For example, the after-school programs, Seneca, Art Dance Garden, and others such programs. The feedback should be a minimum of twice a year, mid-year and again at the end of the year. But each trimester would be even better. Having a survey monkey run by a neutral party may be the Seneca coach. And it does fall under their job duties to meet with the principal and give feedback and talk about things that happened on campus weekly. Of course, this wouldn't be a weekly topic. This allows for needed communication to strengthen our schools and it follows our UTR contract where teachers get to have input in decision-making. It will also help teacher retention and help make teachers heard, feel heard, and possibly even more appreciated. If teachers have weekly observations and feedback, it's very reasonable to have a trimester feedback system for others on our school site. We talk about equity. Please help us have equity of voice. I would also like to ask that the district consider making a rule that the PTA, SSE, ELAC, and AAPAC meetings are held after school so that teachers and people who work can actually attend. Having these meetings during the school hours in the early morning does not allow for people who need to be at these meetings or people who might want to be at these meetings to attend these meetings. It kind of makes it a elite specialist group of certain people. And that's really not what these are for. Thank you for hearing my concerns and have a good evening.
Our next public speaker is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself. Please unmute yourself.
Hello. Can you hear me? You can hear me? Yes. I have some computer issues. All right. So good evening, everyone. One, I want to say I love the student advocacy. I teach it, practice it with my students, so I love the student advocacy. Also, I am a Lincoln Elementary student and so I love Lincoln. And my name is Swahili, so hearing the speaker talk about Swahili and it was Ms. Beck, our classroom aide, a Black woman, who told me what my name meant, which means full of life, full of joy. And she created like a circular medallion for me. I will never, ever forget that. The main reason I called in tonight because I see Dr. Hurst in your superintendent's report. We're going to, there's going to be a presentation around anti-racism. During COVID, we had some anti-racism work and it's kind of personal. I'm going to be optimistic that this, I know it's going to be good work, but I'm going to be optimistic at the outcomes, even though I have some concerns because of what I've experienced in my umpteen years here in the district. There's a quote in the slide about anti-racism is the commitment to fight racism wherever you find it, including in yourself. And that's the part that kind of gets me because too many people in this district do not want to look at themselves and they want to point the fingers at other people. And I'm the type of person, like if you know me, you know I say I own my stuff all day because I am not perfect. What I'm hoping is that people are going to see the humanity in the adults or the colleagues as well as in our students. Because if this, if the adults ain't right, the kid's not going to be right. How's it going to trickle down to the kids if the adults cannot handle their bias, their discrimination? I don't believe that I've worked with anybody who's just an outright racist. I don't believe that in this district. But what I do believe, there is a lot of- But what I do believe, there is a lot of bias and discrimination, and people want to point the fingers at others. So I'm looking forward to moving forward with this process, and I just hope everyone is all in and looks at themselves first.
Next public comment is Rose. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board of Trustees. My daughter is a sophomore at Vista High School. Do you guys have kids? How about kids with mental health problems? How about kids with academic problems? For years, my daughter went through that. You know, as a parent, the most painful thing to see is to see your kid struggle and there's nothing you could do about it. Then, the light at the end of the tunnel, we found Vista High. Vista High changed my daughter's life in a significant way. Her teacher, Ms. Mel Mahi, helped my daughter to be where she's at now. From a student with severe anxiety and imperfect grades to an excelling, straight A student and currently enrolled at a concurrent student at Contra Costa College. All that because of Ms. Mel Mahi's guidance. She is the best at what she does. No teacher's ever been as attentive, considerate, and patient. Her years of experience teaching high school was able to help enhance my daughter's abilities. Teachers like Ms. Mel Mahi are a gift. They should be protected and they should be supported. Taking away what these teachers do best would not only be hurtful, but would also be harsh to all the kids that look up to them for help and encouragement. I hope you all reconsider the impact that these teachers hold on to their student. Teachers working at Vista Virtual Academy not only know their student best, but also adjust to each student's learning style that best enhance their success. The relationship that these students have with their teachers and, and the trust they have in them is something that cannot be replaced. I hope you guys really consider what the outcome of this eventually to all the students that's even coming in and staying. So thank you for your time, and I hope you guys have a wonderful evening.
Next public speaker is Regina Bates. Please unmute yourself.
Um, hello, my name is Abria, and my homeroom teacher is Ms. Mahi. And I just wanted to say that she has been the best teacher to me, and she has really helped me a lot and made me feel comfortable as a student. Every time I've had a question or had an issue, she was always right there to help me. And if it wasn't for her, I would not have as much motivation doing my schoolwork now. And I would not have as much, uh, better grades as I do now because I am a straight A student because of her, and I would like to really thank her a lot for helping me out. And in my opinion, there's other things that this district needs to look into besides trying to cut teachers because there's actual issues going on in this district. And who are the, who are the students going to rely on if you take away the only good teachers?
And I also want to add to that. I am Abria's mom, Regina Bates, and, um, I graduated from Deansville. And back then, and I'm the class of eighty-five, and we had one-on-one consultations with our teachers. Our key, our teachers really cared about us. Now, to be able to get that for my daughter nowadays, one-on-one, it's like a private school. And for you guys to have the audacity to take it away, that's, that's really crazy, especially when the kids need it the most. And I've seen the change in my daughter tremendously. She was going here when COVID first started, and she's continued, and I kept her in it. And because of that, she's a brand new person. She's doing kickboxing. She's been came out of, um, not really depression, but she was had anxiety. And Ms. Mahi and all the other teachers, but really Ms. Mahi brought her true self out. So I think you guys are doing a disservice to the teachers, to the district, and please reconsider because they are diamonds, and I'm sure that you guys can find somewhere else where you guys can cut. Because teachers should not be the first person on the chopping block. So, thank you.
Our next public speaker is Jose De Leon. That concludes our public comment.
Thank you so much, staff. We are now moving on, and thank you to the public who, um, called in or who came to speak. We're now moving on to agenda item B seven, standing reports. We have two standing reports from our PACs. Um, we have M D A C and we have asset. I don't see M D A C in the room. Am I missing M D A C? I don't see them. Okay, so, um, asset, if you want to come up and do your standing report. Thank you so very much.
Hello, can y'all hear me? Okay. Thank you. So tonight, we, um, we're going to have one of our, we're part of the Black Educational Task Force, which is a group built up of community residents, parents, and also leadership, parent leadership in our community. So tonight, they're going to show you all some of the work that the ASAT team, executive team, and the community members have been working on. I think Rosa sent you all the slide presentation, and, um, Jamila said we're not going to be able to show it. So we're going to speak to it, but you all should have it. And so, um, thank you. I didn't see it right there. So, um, Anita is going to be speaking, um, from the task force, um, sharing with you all some of the work we've done so far. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, good evening. Um, I am speaking today on behalf of the task force and the task force members. Uh, Ms. Denise Van Hook, um, Gilberto Cooper, um, Stephanie Houston, Shamara, Shamara, Shamara Shiloh, Ms. Zelan Harrison, Juanita Towns, and Yolanda Allen. And some of the work that the Swahili Dual Immersion Task Force has been working on, I want to share with you today. Uh, so far, we have worked diligently and met and discussed using some, um, research on dual immersion practices as well as on Swahili Dual Immersion. And so far, we have worked on our mission, and I want to share that with you today. Um, the mission of the school, the vision of the school, and some of the beliefs surround, surrounding why, uh, Swahili Dual Immersion School. Uh, the mission of the school is to enable opportunities for our most marginalized students by focusing on the cultural, academic, and developmental needs through a Swahili Dual Immersion School model. A Swahili Dual Immersion School's vision is to make this West Contra Costa Unified School District and this school and this school district a district school of choice, particularly for our students, um, that centers around agency, self-determination, interdependence, self-awareness, and community. Our students will achieve mastery through an innovative dual immersion and STEAM curriculum, centered in cultural responsiveness and culturally relevant pedagogy. Beliefs around the Swahili immersion, uh, dual immersion school are that we will provide equitable instruction and promote critical thinking and problem-solving skills and creativity through, uh, project-based learning, which allows students to explore and apply their knowledge of history, culture, and language in real-world situations. The task force meets regularly. Um, the meetings are held at five-thirty on Mondays and every other Wednesday at the Black Parent Resource Center at two sixty Broadway, Richmond. And the meetings are also hybrid, so families, uh, interested community members can attend virtually or they can attend in person. Um, as an educator, I have been an educator in West Contra Costa County as well as in, um, other counties in, uh, the California area. I've been in education for twenty-two years. I joined the work of the task force because I also have a child in West Contra Costa County Schools, and he's with me today at this meeting. And I deeply believe in our students. I believe that, um, West Contra Costa will be the school of choice for our students. We need to stop losing students. We need to stop losing students, and we need to be a school of choice in which our students gravitate to quality schools, and our district is a quality school district. And we want to be a part of making that for all of our students, particularly our black and brown students. Um, and, uh, thank you. Um, thank you very much. Thank you so very much. Staff, is M D A C in the room? And are they on Zoom? No? Okay. Thank you. Board, we're now moving to agenda item B eight, agenda review and adoption. Board, are there any changes to the agenda? See and none. The agenda is adopted. We're now moving to agenda item B nine, approval of minutes, March sixth and March twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Are there any corrections? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Okay, on March sixth, it's just to point out that on C eight, which was the Assistive Technology Clerk, it was supposed to come back on the March twentieth meeting, and it did not, um, with an, with an approved funding source. Um, it, it hasn't been posted because in the motion, it can't be posted until the funding source is identified, but do we have an idea when that is coming back?
Can you speak to that, um, Ms. Moses?
Yes, we provided information regarding, um, how the position was going to be added to the special education staffing matrix. However, we were asked to dig deeper to find out. It seemed like the ask is, uh, how are we going to afford it? Meaning, what reductions will we make to, uh, be able to add that position? And we're still at the discussion point of trying to figure that out since we do believe that is the ask.
So there is no date at this time?
No, ma'am, not at this time.
Okay, then moving on to action item E five, resolution two-three-two-four-dash-five-six, classified reduction of grant-funded positions. It says that I have a vote not recorded. I believe I voted yes on that. And then on G, comments from the board, uh, my statement, there is a link in this statement, and the, the permissions on this statement need to be adjusted so that it could be accessed um, by someone who does not have a W C C U S D email. Okay, then moving on to March twentieth. I have one small correction on C three, which was the literacy discussion. And it says balanced, to remove the word balance. It's actually balanced with a D on the end. It's a little nitpicky, but important. And that is it. Thank you. I'll just hand these over, um, if they are approved.
Thank you so much, Board. Is there a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections that trustee Reckler has pointed out?
I'll go ahead and move them with the changes noted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Board. We are headed to the vote. Let's start with trustee, um, Parcar.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdu, trustee Abdua Par, Parrove. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, you got it. Um, yes.
Thank you, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Thank you, trustee Christian. Thank you, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving on to the consent items. We are on, on agenda item C. Board, are there any changes to the consent calendar? Where the consent items? Trustee Reckler?
Yes, I'd like to pull C five, report creator plugin for Power School. C six, approval of fundraising activities, and C eight, contracts.
All of C eight?
Yes, thank you.
Any other, any other consent items being pulled tonight? No? Thank you. We need a vote on consent items? Yeah, we do. Thanks. All right, we're going to go to the vote. Um, trustee, now I'm having the hardest time remembering. Um, so Hotman's Pal, Palcar, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Abdua Par, Parrove.
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
I'm sorry, President Smith. I don't think there was a motion.
There probably wasn't, sir. Let's do that.
I apologize.
That's okay. No.
I'll just, I'll make a motion to approve the rest of the consent comment.
Thank you.
Apart from what was pulled.
Is there a second to approve the consent calendar with items? Five, six, and eight pulled?
I second.
Thank you very much. Now we're going to go back to the vote. Trustee Palcar, your vote, please, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdua Parrove.
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you, everyone. We are now moving to agenda item D, Superintendent Communication. Dr. Hurst, this is your item.
Thank you so much, ma'am. If we could bring up the presentation, please. If we can go to the next. We first want to thank, um, our Director of Communications for getting information out to all of our learning community regarding the solar eclipse. Uh, she also got information about how to construct their own pinhole projector as well as giving information about the solar eclipse. Um, if we go to the next slide, we want to share some pictures as well. Uh, thank you, President Smith Folds, for supplying the pictures. You can see the students either with their eclipse glasses, appropriate glass on, or making those pinhole projectors as well. Go into the next slide. And another slide, uh, showing our students making, uh, pinhole projectors as well. And next slide. This picture actually came from, um, El Cerrito High School, and we had, um, a staff member who was filming this appropriately and sent this in to me as well. Next slide. So we wanted to pause and just, um, share for a minute and just talk about the training that has been happening across the district with anti-racism. And you heard one of our employees come on and talk about the anti-racism work. But we want to just share that, um, the work has been extensive. We wanted to take this opportunity and not just to share with the board because most of our board members are aware of the level of work that's been happening in this area, but also the public. So the work that's been happening has been extensive. We've been meeting with all of our principals or fifty-four principals, uh, talking about anti-racism. We also have been meeting with executive cabinet. That's those who work closely with me in doing this work as well. Our executive directors have been involved in this work. We've had one student summit thus far, and we have another student summit coming up involved in this work. A Board of Trustees have been involved in this work, and they've really been looking at this work from a policy level. They've been engaged in a book by Bettina Love called Punished for Dreaming and looking at policy. And then, uh, next steps is looking at affinity groups. And then what I will share as well is we have some immersive principals, and these are principals that we're doing a deeper dive with going into this work of anti-racism. I want to call out those schools and those principals, thanking them for engaging in the work authentically and also bringing their teachers as well. We have Principal Jordan from Kensington, Principal Matt Sloan from Chavez, Principal David Ranch from Madera. Principal David Ranch from Madera, Principal Kibby Climen from Pino Valley High, Principal Charlotte Betson from Miravista. And then, also, we have Principal Edara Bale from Harding, and those are immersive schools. So when you look at this first slide, you heard one of our employees share, "The beauty of anti-racism is that you don't have to pretend to be free of racism to be an anti-racist. Anti-racism is the commitment to fight racism wherever you find it, including in yourself." Next slide. In this training with the immersive principals, we had Dr. Rogers Ard, who's been working with us over this past year. And she shared a little bit about herself, how she worked in Oakland Unified School District, 22 years as a teacher and administrator, and really been developing anti-racist educators. She also has worked with Alameda County Office of Education, Senior Leadership Development. And then, also, you can see that she's been leading her own consultant company and really growing anti-racist leaders and organizations, and she's the one that's working with us. Next slide. So at our training yesterday with the teachers and the immersive schools and the principals, there were some frameworks and some outcomes, and she calls it the five Ds. So we were looking at some core concepts to define those concepts. Also, we were looking to increase our skills to disrupt racist beliefs and behaviors. We also focused on dismantling the ways in which white supremacist beliefs and behaviors are embedded in our schools and classrooms. And also, we discuss dreaming, dreaming about shifting to personal and professional anti-racist practices and then designing strategies. And this is where we ended, and I'll talk a little bit more about the action plan piece as well. Next slide. So one of the terms we discuss is, is what is racism? The marginalization and/or oppression of people of color based on a socially constructed racial hierarchy that privileges white people? And another term that we discussed and defined on the next slide is defining anti-blackness. And anti-blackness refers to a systemic racism and discrimination against black people perpetuated through social, cultural, and economic institutions. And then, the next slide. One of the first activities that she, Dr. Rogers Ard, engaged in with us is asking the question for us to think of one word, and how do I experience racism? And she asks everyone to participate, and you can hear the one words coming from each member. Some were saying they experienced racism often. Some shared daily. There were even some said they've never experienced racism, and some even used the term backhanded. Next slide. I thought this was interesting as well, and Dr. Rogers Ard shared that she has had this conversation many times with organizations, looking at this pyramid. And she asked everyone, the teachers and the principals, to rank the races according to the US caste system. And she looked at African-American, Black, Asian, Latinx, and White. And she just asked the question openly to the entire group, which race would go to the top? The consensus was White at the top. To the next level, consensus was Asian at that next level, at the top tier. And then, Latinx, and then, African-American, Black at the bottom. Again, she shared that this has been consistent in every training workshop that she has completed. Next slide. And she talked a lot about this also. This slide really deals with the focus on anti-racism. And this was eye-opening for me as well. I focused on equity in other districts. And what she has been clear about is that equity is not enough and that anti-racism really includes all of these pieces in the year. It includes inclusion, includes equity, justice, diversity, and belonging. This is why she's focusing with us on anti-racism. Next slide. And there was a lot of individual work. There's a lot of whole-group work, and there was a lot of small-group work as well. What I really appreciated is that the principals were able to meet with their teams, get into small groups, open up a Google document, and then start working on a plan to really address and put in concrete steps that they're gonna implement to address racism on a campus. And they had to do this by the end of the school year. Our next steps is to make sure that we meet with principals of all of the schools, but also these immersive schools, meet with the executive directors and really identify what are the next steps around clear expectations for accountability? In other words, how are we gonna hold those schools accountable for their action plans? And then, next slide. So we're gonna transition this to National Library Week. So this is National Library Week, and we do have a proclamation from our governor, and I want to read just portions of it. I thought this was appropriate just to share from Governor Newsom. He says, "During National Library Week, we celebrate the essential services, resources, and opportunities that libraries and library workers provide for all Californians." He goes on to say "that Californian library workers play an essential role, civic role, helping people of all ages and all backgrounds access to resources, programs, and services they need and serving as a key source for trusted information." He goes on to say, "All too often, libraries and librarians face censorship and attacks amid rising school and library book challenges, many targeting LGBTQ+ authors and writers of color. It's more important than ever that we recognize the significance of books and materials that reflect the breadth of our rich diversity and defend the essential role of public libraries in protecting intellectual freedom." And he concludes by saying, "In California, we know libraries hold more than books. They are the heart of our communities. During National Library Week, we honor our libraries and library workers and endless possibilities they offer to enrich the lives of Californians across the state." You can see a picture of some of our librarians. And I will just share with you the theme of our National Library Week is Ready, Set, Library. The purpose of National Library Week is to promote information services and resources as well as reading and the benefits of literacy. What can we do? We could visit our school libraries, all of us. We can meet our school librarians. We can thank our librarians. We can go in person and thank them. We could send cards to them. We can send a thank you through email as well. We can also investigate the many resources available in our libraries for our students and staff. In fact, we have school visits, myself and the board president, and I will be visiting libraries throughout the district this Friday just to share a word of thank you. So we'd like to thank all of our librarians across our district, and thank you for the amazing work you do for our students and our staff. Next slide. And then, we want to share with you some events that's happening in our district. You can see First Bullet 2024 Parents as Partners Conference at Dejawn on the 13th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Plant Cell and Seed Giveaway, Betty Reed Soskins, on the 13th, 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. West Contra Costa Unified School District, 58th Annual Student Art Show, Reception and Student Awards at Richmond Art Center on the 16th from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. We have an elementary open house, minimum day, on the 18th, 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. There's gonna be a talent show at Ella Horse Elementary on the 19th, 6:45 PM. We have the Third Quarter Honor Roll Ceremony at Pino Middle School, the 19th, at 1:30 PM. Literacy Lesson Celebrations at Downer Elementary on the 23rd from 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. We have a Special Education Fair at Vista High, 27th, 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And the Richmond, we just wanted everyone to be aware of this, the Richmond-San Pablo Cinco de Mayo Parade on May the 4th at 10:00 AM. Next slide. And then, we wanted to share with you that we do have a Governance Committee in force, and we are looking at these policies. We have already reviewed the anti-racism policy. It went to board approval. It was board-approved on March the 20th. We also viewed the Governance Handbook, but that's gonna go back to the Governance Committee on the 29th at Ella Horse from 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM for some additional work. We have a new policy for paying student trustees and giving them high school credit. We'll be looking at that in the Governance Committee meeting. Review of Board Policy, 5127, Graduation Ceremony and Activities. Also, considering a new policy on period poverty or menstrual equity for all. We'll be reviewing a new policy on book review and book banning. Bullying policies as well, harassment policies. We'll be looking at a new policy on COLA, received from our CDE, California Department of Education. New policy for preservation of school-based art in other installations, which is really our mural policy, and we do have a draft of that. So the Governance Committee will be looking at a draft of that policy. A new policy for cellphone use at schools. We'll be reviewing a policy for charter colocations. Curriculum adoption review process policy. We'll be reviewing our updated or looking at our CBLC policy as well. Our recruitment and selection policy process. And then, also, we have a draft of our anti-racism policy. You heard the board already approved the anti-racism statement. We already have a workup of the policy and a workup of the administration regulation, administrative regulation that will go to the Governance Committee, and then, it will come back to this body of the board. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much. I'll turn it back over to the board president.
Thank you so much for the superintendent report. Board, do we have any questions on the report? Seeing no questions, we'll move to the next item. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. We are now on Agenda Item E1. These are our action items. The first one is Promethean Active Panels Purchase. Ms. Logan, I believe this is your item.
Good evening, Board. Thank you. Excuse my movie star status. I am recovering from pink eye in both eyes, and so my eyes are sensitive. But I am excited and honored to be here this evening. I am joined by the fabulous Laurie Roberts, our EdTech Coordinator. And this evening, we are going to give you an update on our Promethean Panel implementation in our schools and ask for your approval for the final purchase of Promethean's 357 for the remainder of our TK through 12, grade 12 classrooms. So, again, I want to start. Laurie, I want to thank you for your leadership, for your vision, for your coordination, and your incredible organization. This has been a project that's been two years in the making. It's involved lots of people, lots of moving parts. And I am so proud and grateful for your incredible work. So thank you, first of all. Secondly, TTLs, our Technology Teacher Leaders, these are the folks who are our champions, are on the ground. They are our lead learners. They are the people who are trying out new technologies and supporting colleagues to learn those technologies, to tinker, to fail forward. And so, TTLs, thank you. I thank you, thank you. To our site leaders, I thank you for the space, grace, and support that you've provided to our teachers as we've embarked on this journey over the last two years. To Grace Kelly, our coach, who supported our teachers and all of our teachers who have taken steps to learn something new for your openness and for the partnership along the way. So, as I mentioned, this has been a journey. We started two years ago when we conducted a survey of all of our teachers on possible classroom technology replacement. About 70% of our classroom technology, projection technology, was becoming end of life. By next year, that will be closer to 90%. So we knew we needed to do something. We had an opportunity to use one-time SIR funds to do it, and we provided various opportunities for folks to try out different technologies for teachers and students to give feedback on that best technology. So I'm gonna pass it on to Laurie now, who will talk more about what our journey has been and where we are today.
Good evening. I'm back. So I wanted to start off by saying thank you to Tracy because without Tracy, without her vision, we wouldn't be here at all today. So I'd like to start with where we've been. So we started this process, actually, back in 2021. So time really flies. We started with a survey, as Tracy said, and this data informed our decision to pilot the active panels. So teachers at 13 schools piloted the active panels during the 2223 school year, and feedback was collected from students, teachers, and administrators. We used this information to propose a continuation of the program, which was approved in June of 2023. Last summer was very busy. Our pilot sites received full complements of active panels, while the rest of our sites received set numbers of active panels to rotate among their teachers. We put a process in place to determine which sites would receive their full complement of active panels in December, which included teacher feedback from 75% of the site staff and a plan for professional learning. Nine schools received full complements of active panels in December, and since then, sites have continued to work toward full deployment readiness. So let me just bring you up to speed so you don't have to read all of the words on this slide. So far, we have deployed 604 active panels to sites. We've increased the number of 100% schools to 26. We've supported our teachers through professional learning provided by Grace Kelly, our Promethean Active Panel Education Consultant, and through targeted technical support provided by Richard Bobis, who is our very own AV technician. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention the integral part of our Technology Teacher Leaders. They played a huge part of this process. They are the people who've made all of this happen, keeping the active panels front of mind for their staff through regular reminders, staff professional learning, one-on-one support, and generally just being the best Promethean cheerleaders and mascots. So how do we know that they're being used? Well, we do have a management console right now, and we are working on a process to get usable data from it. But what's most important is that we see that the active panels are being used in meaningful ways. And the way that we know that they are being used in meaningful ways are through these three ways. Surprise, classroom visits. I've walked through tons of classrooms. I have heard from other teachers, I have heard from administrators about the use of the active panels. There's a lot of teacher enthusiasm showing that they, Showing that they, there are so many teachers who have tried them out, who are very sad to see them go. I think that the very first time I was here and reported to you, I said that there were teachers who were. Ready to chain themselves to the Promethean active panels because they did not want to see them go. And we've also seen use of the active panels everywhere. So very recently, we've had two CDE events. And they actually use the active panels so that we had greater um access to students at multiple sites. We also used it for the student summit that we had in November. So on this next slide. There's a lot here, I know. So I'm only going to read two. Of the comments that highlight accessibility and teacher efficiency. So the first one is in the upper right hand corner and it says. This board is an amazing versatile learning vehicle that gives universal access in many ways in the classroom. And then the one in the bottom right hand. Corner, I absolutely loved how it simplified my prep. I didn't need to constantly print out materials, laminate them, et cetera. I could use Google Slides with photos and students could and students could write on and manipulate them as needed. And it encompassed all my tech needs. No need to constantly turn on a sound system, a projector, projector, et cetera.
So as we deploy active plant panels, we are also pulling back the projectors that were in the classroom. Currently, we've been moving things around, right? Because we have teachers who have projectors. That are dying and on their last legs, so we move working projectors to their rooms. But once that all of the active panels are installed, our intention is to pull out all those projectors. And those that are in good shape will be sold and we will maximize trying to get every penny we can to bring back into this district. So tonight we are asking that you approve the purchase of three hundred and fifty seven Promethean active panels using one time S R funds. Again, which will complete this project. This is the final deployment for TK to twelfth grade classrooms. Representing the schools that you see in front of you, these twenty two schools. I will say there is one omission, apologies Lake. Lake Elementary should also be on this list. They are included in the three hundred and fifty seven, so they are part of this final deployment. So that concludes our presentation and we're happy to take any questions.
Thank you so very much for the presentation. We are going to go to. Public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one, oh, two. Our public speaker is Denise Dean. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me? Okay, so we were one of the pilot schools and we now have a hundred percent. Promethean boards and they are used every day, all day in our classrooms. The kids come to the board, they do math problems. Uh we actually watched the eclipse, yes, uh Monday. From the board. So I just feel like this is such an amazing tool. For our classrooms and I really um I I really would like you guys to. Uh promote this for the the rest of the schools. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Kimberly Dor Sargantini. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm also one of the ones who's had a Promethean since August. And I also like the board and I feel I'm that all the schools should have them um for the sake of equity in our district. I like that all the students can see them. I can raise it up for them to view, which could not happen on my old projector. And I can lower it so they can actually touch when we're doing an activity because most of my students are little, they're kindergarten. So they're able to actually reach it and touch when we're doing an activity. And a student came back from Korea and and wanted to talk about what he saw there and I was able to actually. Pull things up on the Promethean so that as he's talking, he can say, yeah, this is where I went. Same thing as the previous speaker, we watched the eclipse on there. We're raising um catapulters right now to butterflies. We were able to look to see what to expect. When we're using the Chromebooks, I'm able to demo on the bigger screen so that they can see what to do on their screen. So I feel it's been a really useful tool. Thank you.
Next public speaker is Susan Gonzalez. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening, Dr. Hurst, school board trustees and community members. My name is Susan Gonzalez. I work as an elementary prep teacher in the district and I'm the technology teacher leader at Kensington. I've had the opportunity to have a Promethean active panel nine in my classroom at Kensington since August. The other three panels have been rotated several times among the remaining classrooms since the beginning of the school year. At the end of the first rotation in August, the teachers who were parting ways with it were unhappy. In a matter of two weeks, they and their students had bonded with the panels. Students in one of our fifth grade classes had the following to relay and summary of their experience. Caroline shared, I think that the Promethean board is very helpful. I think that being able to have a spinner, timer and stopwatch is very useful. The Promethean board is also much easier for students to see than a projector. Another advantage is that you can open a PDF and put the board on whiteboard mode so that you can mark up the PDF. Overall, I really love Promethean boards and I would be delighted if the district got a permanent one for every classroom. Maria relate, the Promethea makes it easy to see from the back of the room and it is more clear. Finally, Kayden summed up his thoughts in three words. I love it. Thank you so much for your time and attention. Have a nice evening.
Next public speaker is Kate Burkhart. Please unmute yourself.
Yes, it sounds like a good program. I hope you're getting good support from the vendor and the manufacturer. So that as things. As the bugs come out. You'll have good support. From the, from the vendor. I know that the district is working hard with their support people and I think it's great. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Kinsner. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, board. I'm actually asking for help. I think Verdi was like the original school that piloted this. And so for two years now, I've been trying to get a movable um mount for my board. First I was told I couldn't have it because it was too expensive, even though I was told I could have it. And then Jeff at D and D. Don said he would donate it. But the problem is is we can't get the people down into my room when I'm there to work with them either, to move my whiteboards. So that it can be mounted properly. It's been two years. When my room was broken into this year and things were stolen, including Promethean board pieces. Again, I couldn't get the pieces. I couldn't get the pieces. Jeff donated them to my class, so I'd have what I needed. So thank you, thank you so much to the vendor, Jeff, and I'm hoping maybe you can help. Move along this two year request to finish fixing my board because I have TK and K kids. They need the board to be lowered so they can reach it. And then, of course, I need to raise it so that they could see it. Thank you so much. We love our board.
Our next public speaker is Caitlin Marchesi. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, I am a special education teacher and I am lucky enough to be a TTL and also have a board with me. Um I love that the boards create accessible environments for all students. And being a Vista teacher, it's been great to be able to use the board in a lot of flexible ways, whether we're doing hybrid instruction. Or having opportunities for students to come on campus and play. Our kindergarten teacher or kindergarten students, first grade, second grade and third grade students who have been on campus have. Easily been able to figure out how to use the board and use it effectively. For really diverse, different types of needs that they have within their classroom learning space. Thank you so much.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much, staff. We are now bored. We are on to questions. Does anyone have questions? Go ahead, ma'am.
Um so I just wanted. I just wanted to clarify that the funding used for this is a grant. Right? Or what is it?
So this is a, it's one time funding. It's called S R funding. It's part of the COVID relief funding. Sorry, that we got as a district and it expires in September.
Okay, and I know that some funding has like outlines of like what the goal is for the funding. So I don't know if you mentioned it. Could you please tell me like what the funding um hopes to achieve?
Sure, um part of one of the goals of the COVID relief funding is for students was around. Learning loss uh and engagement. So technology is actually one of the allowable expenses. In that it is um designed to be a tool to help students better engage with their learning and to support teachers to better support students to engage.
Okay, thank you. Um also, I just wanted to ask um. If we'll have time for comments? Okay, then I'm done. Thank you.
Board, any more questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
President Smith Folds, I'll move to approve the purchase and setup of the three hundred and fifty seven Promethean active display panels. On mobile carts to complete the deployment at a cost of. One million nine hundred eighty four thousand fifty seven dollars and eight and forty eight cents. I don't know if this much detail needed to be on the motion, but. I'm reading off the recommendations, so I just move for approval.
Thank you so much. Is there a second? Thank, thank you so much. Board, we are now on to comments. Does anyone have a comment? Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, well, it sounds like it's being used very well, which I'm happy for, but. I do recall during an ASC meeting, we were talking about like funding um for our student trustee report. We wanted to hear what the members had to say and I do vividly recall. A lot of the students expressing their distaste for the Promethean boards because. Um a lot of their teachers actually didn't use it and they felt like it was a waste of money, especially since. You know, they're struggling in other areas. Um I'm glad to hear that a lot of teachers do um. Use it, but I did want to put that out there because I'm wondering where this difference comes from, like how come the students in the ASC are saying. That it's not used, but then I hear a bunch of teachers saying that it is.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? Clerk Gonzalez Hoy, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um yeah, at first I wanted to respond to uh the comment from our district trustee. I think that um there, that is the case because some teachers are still choosing to use the projectors. Uh but as mentioned in the presentation, that's going to go away eventually, so. Uh every teacher is going to have to use this resource, which we hope that they do because from what I've, it's been my observation. Uh and the feedback from the people using it, it is a great resource um that I am incredibly jealous I didn't have when I was teaching. Um so uh I I think that every time I speak to a teacher about it. Um they say that it's changed the way that they approach their teaching, which I think to me is a really positive thing. Um so I'm really thankful that we're making this investment. But I think it's actually a very smart investment long term because of the expense of of Prometheans versus projectors. Um so so I think that's one piece and two, the the funding. Uh I mean, it is one time funds, so eventually we're going to have to really have a deep conversation about how do we. Uh buy new ones for the old ones eventually, um which I'm not looking forward to when that happens. But uh as of right now, thankfully, because we have some of this one time money left, this is how we're able to do it. Otherwise, I think that we'd have a much harder. Job of actually being able to purchase them. Um but in my opinion, this is money well spent, uh because what I hear is that it's truly. Uh having an effect on teaching and learning, so. Uh maybe not for everyone and we need to have a discussion about that because of this feedback that our student trustees are hearing. We definitely need to figure out how to continue to increase that engagement. Um so thank you for for sharing that perspective. Thank you so much, both to Laurie, who I've been saying a name wrong for a decade, uh and uh Tracy, of course, in your department.
Thank you so very much. I think that one of the things that. I was resistant because I was also resistant when they took chalkboards out and they put whiteboards in. So I just have this kind of like. Thing about like, this is how I learned how to teach, but then I got to see it in the classroom. Now granted, it was an elementary school classroom, so I got to see it in elementary school classroom and the amount of engagement that the kids had. To this board and the amount of engagement that the teacher had. To using the boards in her lesson plan was absolutely amazing. So it did change me. It changed my mind and then I got to play on it. And I was like, oh, okay, now I get it. Like, I see it. Um. I would like to look at how we're using it in middle school and high school. And see if we're getting that same level of engagement and that same level of excitement. And if we're not, how do we? Encourage our high school teachers to. To stop being so resistant like I was, right? To give them that opportunity to say, okay, let's play. Let's really look at how we can use this board and just really expand our teaching practices. So I thank you so much for the report. I'm looking forward to seeing this everywhere in the district and for us to have. A different outcome so we can say, yo, we're using it everywhere, high school, middle school, elementary school, everybody's using it. I'm complete. Thank you, ladies. I appreciate it. Oh, haha, never mind, we got to take a vote. So you can stand there and see if we can do the vote. Okay, here we go. We are up to the vote. Any more comments before we take a vote? Yes, ma'am.
Um, well, I just wanted to like, I don't know if it's too late to ask, but I wanted to confirm, like I know you said that you did like. Teachings about um like how to use Promethean because I also recall like students said like, oh, a lot of their. Older teachers were resistant to like learn new technologies, so I wanted to confirm like, once this is approved, like. There's going to be continuation of like teachings for how to use it.
Can I respond? Absolutely. Um yes, so part of um. This, the way we've been rolling it out is to go slow to make sure that teachers really have that time to learn. So we first started with just having a couple of the boards in each school to rotate around and people kind of try it out. But with the rollout, we also get a consultant from Promethean. We heard a people, a couple of people call in and talk about the importance of vendor support and they're. They're totally right. So we have a woman, Grace Kelly, who's actually a former teacher from our district. Who works now for Promethean and she is a coach. So she comes, she works one on one with teachers, she works with grade level teams. Um kind of whatever makes sense for that school environment. And I'll I'll also say that our strategy has been to leave the existing projectors for about a month. To give teachers time to get used to the new, the new technology, but not too much time, right? Where you. Get just comfortable um and you don't try something new. So we're trying to find that right balance, but with lots of support.
So we do have ongoing professional learning sessions. We have those about every two weeks. Actually, it's twice a month. Um Grace Kelly gives those. Those are actually, teachers are actually paid to attend those. So um they do have plenty of opportunities. She also holds weekly office hours.
Thank you so very much. That's good. All right, board to the vote. Trustee Pal Kar?
Uh, yes.
Thank you so much. Trustee Abdugah Parrove?
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you very much, ladies. We are now moving on to action item E two, award of contract Hercules Middle High, Middle School, High School Library HVAC Refrigerant. Line replacement project. Mr. Freeze, this is yours.
Uh thank you very much. Good evening, President Smith Folds, uh Superintendent Hurst and the board. On March first, twenty twenty four. The district publicly advertised and solicited bids pursuant to the requirements of public contract code for the Hercules Middle High School. HVAC refrigerant line replacement project. As described in the invitation for bids, sealed bids were received, were to be received no later than two PM on March twelfth, twenty twenty four. One mandatory pre-bid conference and site visit were held on March fifth and one contractor attended. The district held a public bid opening on March twelfth. No bids were received. Because no bids were received, the district staff contacted the firm and requested that he submitted a bid for the project. The district adopted the California Uniform Public Contract Code of Costing Procedures. And is authorized to negotiate a contract for the project because no bids were received despite. The district staff formally bidding the project. That we are asking tonight that you award the project for Hercules Middle High School Library HVAC Refrigerant Lines. In the sum of one hundred and two thousand six hundred and twenty five dollars to City Mechanical.
Thank you so much, Mr. Freeze. Uh staff, are there public comments?
Yes.
Our public speaker is Kate Burkhart. Please unmute yourself. One.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with my race and I pass. I pass.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so very much, staff. We are now moving on to questions. Board, do we have any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion? I will move that we award of contract for Hercules Middle School, High School Library HVAC Refrigerant Line Replacement Project. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much, board. Are there comments?
President Smith, I just wanted to check, do we have to say two city mechanics as part of the motion? No? Okay, never mind, we're good.
Thank you. Board, are there comments? Seeing none, we'll move straight to the vote. Trustee Pa, Parkar? Palkar? Palkar.
Palkar, yeah, um yes, I'm a yes.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Abdugah Parrove?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you so very. Thank you so very much. We're now moving on to action item E three, increase the project budget and award the contract for the Shannon Elementary School Critical Needs Project. Mr. Freeze, this is your item.
Yes. Tonight, we're excited to bring forward the Shannon Elementary School Multi-Pur- Purpose Room Project. Uh, the project consists of six thousand two hundred square foot multi-purpose room building, covered walkways, trash enclosure canopy, related site utility improvements, as well as the demolition of the existing multi-purpose room portable. The district initially conducted a public bid process for the project on November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Four contractors had submitted bids, C W S Construction Group of the total of nine million six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, Strong Construction eleven million one hundred thousand dollars, Wickman Development and Construction of twelve million three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and Beals Martin Associates of seven million six hundred and sixty-six thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. And they were withdrawn from the bid. After reviewing the bids and determining that we exceeded the board-approved budget, the district recommended rejecting the bids and rebidding the project. On December sixth, the board approved and authorized the rejection of all bids and rebid the project. The district conducted, conducted a public bid process for the rebid of the project. Bids were open on March twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Four contractors submitted bids, Strong Construction, the total of seven million eight hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, C W S Construction, seven million eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, C F R C Inc. at nine million nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand three hundred dollars, and S and H Construction at ten million six hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred dollars. The rebidding process results in the contract award, award savings of over one point eight million dollars by going back out to bid. Strong Construction, Strong Construction Inc. is the lowest responsible bidder. Uh, contract completion is anticipated for August first, twenty twenty-five. The current board-approved bond-funded project budget for the Shannon Elementary Critical Needs Project is nine point three million dollars. District staff recommends increasing the project budget by seven hundred thousand dollars. Staff recommends increasing the project budget with non-bond funds from our capital facilities fund. We're asking tonight that we increase the project budget from nine million three hundred thousand dollars by adding seven hundred thousand to ten million dollars.
Thank you so much, Mr. Freeze. Staff, are there public comments?
Yes. Our next public speaker is Kate Burkhardt. Please unmute yourself.
Um, I'm still having trouble with my raised hand. I pass. Watch it, watch it.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. Board, are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion?
President Smith, I'll move that we increase the project budget for Shannon uh, Critical Needs Project and award the contract to the lowest responsible, excuse me, responsive, should be responsible better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
Second.
And thank you so much. Board, are there comments? Seeing no comments, we'll go straight to the vote. Trustee Palcar?
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Abdugah Parvrove?
Yes.
Thank you so very much. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you very much. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and I'm a yes. Thank you, Mr. Freeze. I appreciate the presentation. We are now moving on to E four, Williams Lawsuit Complaints Quarterly Report.
Okay. Yes, good evening. Tonight, we bring forward the Williams Complaints Quarterly Report. The Williams Lawsuit requires that a quarterly report be brought before the Board of Education reflecting the number of complaints filed with any school in the district during the particular quarter. This report reflects the period from January first, twenty twenty-four through March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. There were five complaints. There were four teacher vacancy and misassignments and four unresolved. There was one facility complaint that was resolved. We ask the board to receive the Williams Quarterly Report.
Thank you, Mr. Freeze. Board, are there any questions? Oh, no, excuse me, I'm sorry. Are there, is there any public comment?
No public comment.
Thank you. Uh, board, now are there any questions? Uh, trustee Pakar? Baupar, I'm sorry.
It's all right. Um, I was just wondering if we could get a little more information on what exactly this action item consists of?
So this is not an action item, it's just for the board to receive it. But what we're bringing forward are the five complaints that were received. So the one complaint for facilities was, was received from Elsario High School. It was a complaint that bathrooms were not accessible uh, during the school period. Uh, the principal had responded back to the complaint saying that restrooms are open during passing periods. They're only shut down when restrooms are need for repair. The four other complaints, um, Ms. Johnson will address.
Yes, hi. The four other complaints are regarding teacher, uh, misassignments based on their credential. And I did have some information if you'd like to hear it. Um, I wanted to start out by just saying, since COVID, California has had more than ten thousand teacher vacancies. There is a statewide systematic problem, problem of a severe educational workforce shortage. We are experiencing a significant increase in teacher vacancies and a decline in newly issued teacher credentials. As a district, we have implemented recruitment processes and hiring measures in response to the ongoing teacher shortage. And we continue to review and revise our recruitment, our recruitment strategies to increase um, recruitment and retention of our teachers. I'd like to share some things that our district is doing towards recruitment and what we have been doing all school year in the midst of this teacher shortage. From August to March, we have had twenty-nine job fairs. Since the month of April, we have had multiple job fairs each week that our staff has been attending. We currently have three staff members attending job fairs this, um, excuse me, five staff members attending job fairs just this week. We have various job boards, which I can uh, um, spell out for you if you would like. We also participate on university job boards where we have partnerships with thirty-six universities in the state of California and with outside the state of California. We have um, an international recruitment with the Philippines and Mexico. We have um, a teacher residency programs where we offer grants for teachers in these programs to receive money to go towards their living expenses and for their tuition. We have grants for our classified employees to obtain a teacher credential. We even have ed- education pathways at Richmond and Hercules High School. These are just some of the efforts that we have done this school year to, in order to fill these positions. However, it is a challenge that West Contra Costa and other surrounding districts, including districts throughout this nation, are facing. But specifically in our area, we have done research regarding other districts who also have vacancies that are similar to ours for our size district. It's a challenge that we're aware of and that we are constantly looking to how we can make a difference. And I have additional reports that we have shared regarding to the California Department of Education and how it is a struggle for them to keep up with these vacancies. And they are struggling as well to find the support to help our school districts deal with this problem. If I can take any questions.
Thank you. And before I pass back to President Smith, uh, trustee Popar, you can look on the agenda. The actual complaints are attached. If you would like to read more in detail. President Smith, I'll pass back to you.
Thank you so very much. Board, are there any other questions? I have a question over here, trustee Reckler, and then we'll go to trustee Abdugah Parvrove.
Thank you. Thank you for the statement. Um, generally, and I'm talking about the teacher vacancies. So generally, for all the schools mentioned and all of the vacancies, you know, it's, it's pretty much the same what public advocates um, is recommending. Um, how do you respond or what is? How do you respond to, uh, they don't have page numbers on this, but they're talking about, um, you know, lack of a comprehensive recruitment development, hiring and assignment plan across district. They're talking about internal pro- you know, uh, lack of a adequate internal processes to hire and assign teachers in timely manner. Um, and training and, and institutional support. Generally, and I'm not passing judgment because I know that there's a lot of work that has been going on, but how does the district respond to that?
Yes, we have actually provided a written response that was just prepared um, today and was sent to them. And in our written response, we outline the recruitment efforts we have um, that I have mentioned. We outline the teacher support that we currently have in place. And we also explained what we are doing for those vacancies that we have, such as teachers doing period subbing, such as having long-term subs who are not fully credentialed, but they are, do have a temporary credential to be in classrooms, such as working with Teach Start Fellows who are working on their internship credentials, which I'm happy to say we have, we'll have four that will be fully credentialed and ready to be hired at the end of the school year. Um, those are the things that we have outlined in our response to them.
And so then, well, I mean, the only thing I didn't hear you talk about was the stipends, which they do talk about and by law. Um, that, that I, I remember reading something in the Ed Code about being able to offer stipends. Um, do you have any comment on perhaps a, a, you know, their suggestion of stipends? And then what happens? They file the complaint, you respond, and then, you know, like, what, what happens after that?
They, um, so, and with the stipends, we do offer, um, we, we currently offer for teachers who period sub, they get additional pay for that. What they are suggesting or recommending, if I recall, are stipends for incoming teachers. Unfortunately, with our current financial situation, it's something that we have discussed and are looking into, but I cannot confirm right now that we could offer additional stipends for incoming teachers. The second part of your question was in reference to, forgive me.
Yeah, so just to repeat, they filed a complaint, you're responding, and then like, what hap- like, what, what happens next?
Yes, so they have received our response. They can file a response back, um, what we would call an appeal to our response. What that, that is the option that they have. And basically, the ask is for us to have credential teachers in those classrooms. Unfortunately, in our current circumstances, that is very challenging request to accommodate.
Thank you, trustee Reckler. That's three. We're going to move to trustee Abdugah Parvrove. Go ahead, ma'am.
Um, well, it sounds like you, uh, there are a lot of resources to try to gain, like, to fill those vacancies for teachers. And I'm just kind of wondering, like, if we have like all this money and like to provide stipends and pay teachers for us and attending like these um, like work fairs, um, like why are we also letting go like a lot of good teachers? Like, a lot of people have called in for like example, like Vista saying like, why are we letting go these very crucial teachers, but we also have these vacancies and we have money to like pay people to attend fairs and this and that. So I would like if you would enlighten me.
Yeah, very good question. First, I want to make the correction. The job fairs that people are attending are, are um, our staff and human resources. So all of the people who work in our department to meet the needs of our district are taking turns and attending job fairs. So it's not an additional pay. They're doing it as part of the work of human resources. As far as, um, why are we letting teachers go? There are several different factors. When we talk about losing a teacher, it doesn't necessarily mean when, when people are speaking that they are referring to a teacher being let go. They could be referring to the elimination of a teacher at their school site, I, excuse me, an elimination of a position at their school site. And that's really due to the enrollment projections. So if you are enrolled, if you are projected to have eleven teachers this year and then ten teachers next year, because student enrollment has gone down, that's one way where someone may be losing a teacher. That doesn't mean we're releasing that teacher from having a position. The second part of your question, anyone from our district who is being released is someone who has not met the credential qualifications. And by law, they cannot be, continue their employment. At, in our district and in many other districts, because of this crisis, we offer teachers a waiver. So they have a year extension to meet their qualifications. And once that year is up, another waiver cannot be issued, and that is by law. So teachers who are in that position may be losing theirs. And then we have one other category called a non-relection. And that is a decision that is based on recommendation from supervisors, school site administrators. So for those, I can't disclose because those are confidential reasons, but those are the categories that we have. I will tell you that because of our shortage, the only teachers we are releasing are teachers who are not meeting that qualification, meaning their waiver has expired. Or for various reasons, there is a non-relection, and that is during the probationary years of teaching. Within those first two years that they begin teaching.
Okay, that was very insightful. Um, sorry, can you just repeat the probation years, like the thing about that?
Yes, so if you were to start your teaching career, you are, you, you enter the field with a probationary timeframe. And with a probationary timeframe, you are working, and within that timeframe, you are considered non-tenured, which means you do not get to, you may not get to return the next year. And so there are a group that have received a notice of not being tenured.
Okay, um, so, this is kind of more general, but when you say that some teachers haven't met their qualification on, like, in other jobs at schools, like, for example, like a principal, can they also be hired without meeting their qualification? And does the same, like, like a waiver apply to them, like the same rules?
No, the waiver is in place because the state of California has had a teacher shortage. So that is what the state has done to allow you to hire more teachers. In terms of administrators, there is not a shortage. We can find administrators. So they are required to have an admin credential. Prior to this teacher shortage, all teachers were required to have their teaching credential. And there was a time when we would have two hundred applicants for positions. Right now, there are, there are times this year where we have ran posi- we have ran postings and we've had two applicants, perhaps five applicants, and they, at least half of them are not qualified. You see the difference in the, the workforce?
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you. That answered a lot of my questions.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Board, any other questions? No? Board, can I get a motion?
I move that we accept the Williams Lawsuit Complaint Quarterly Report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Board, any comments? Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. May the, may the board see the response letter to public advocates. Thank you.
Yes, it was just sent today. Um, we did have a forty-five day window and we um, were able to respond prior to that window. The reason why it's on the board agenda without the response is because our quarterly report is due, but the response has been completed and was just sent today. So we can give that to you.
Okay, so maybe you could just go in the Friday memo. Thank you.
Board, any other comments? Okay, let's go to the vote. We are at, uh, trustee Palcar?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdugah Parvrove?
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you very much. We are now moving on to our discussion items. We're going to start with F, F one, English Learner Reclassification Criteria for twenty twenty-four Revision.
So thank you. Um, we have today, um, Director Esau Orozco and Coordinator Mary Ann LaFatz, who is going to do a presentation on the new criteria for English learners and reclassification. They are also next, their next item is also on the agenda with an update about new, the newcomer um, academy.
Thank you very much. Good evening. We want to, board president, Demi LaFol.
Thank you very much, good evening, we want to, Board President Demi LaFolte, Superintendent Hearst, Cabinet Members, and dear community. Today's goal is to really review the updates, the refreshed version of, of our district's reclassification criteria for this year and for next year. This slide shows the comparison between the past reclassification criteria in blue and gray, and the updated, refreshed reclassify- reclassification criteria in a rainbow color. In the middle, you'll see the big differences. And a bit of these big differences are not so much what the criterion is, but rather how we communicate what that criteria is to families. Notice that the first big difference is a rainbow. So you want to be able to tell a story when we're talking about reclassification. And we've aligned ourselves to the county and the state with this story of a reclassification rainbow, and that all the colors are needed for reclassification. You don't need one before the other, but we're working for all those colors, so we're following that rainbow to reclassification. Other areas is, we, we want color coordination, because, back to that slide, almost done, thank you so much. Uh, in terms of communicating to families, it's just a lot easier to reference colors versus one, two, and three. The language will also align to the revised language of the state. All of our families go to the state website and look at the reclassification criteria designed by the state. I noticed that our past criteria use slightly different language, which we'll kind of discuss today. Uh, we also believe it's a lot easier, so we merged a lot of spaces, so there's less writing. And then we've included updates from the state. Now, there is no vote, and I want to make that clear unless the school board decides. Everything on this stage has been already voted either by the school board, for example, iReady, or by the state, for example, the Opto Observation Protocol. Both been have, both have been cleared already, so there's technically nothing new on this document. It's just been a refresh of items, uh, to be done. Next slide, please. Now, this is where we get into the details of which each criteria is. And for the first two criteria, uh, Ms. Marianne LaFosse, our coordinator, will review, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, the first criteria in red is the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, or LPAC. This is really the gateway to reclassification. From all the criteria, students need to achieve a score, an overall score of four, to be eligible to reclassify. We have also included in Criterion One, the alternate LPAC. And this requires for the students who qualify for the alternate LPAC, an overall proficiency level or a score of three. Then we have Criterion Number Two, the Teacher Evaluations. And this teacher evaluation is not the teacher's opinion, but it's based on the metric, different metrics that we use for the students who are eligible to reclassify. One of them is LPAC, summative LPAC four, or alternate LPAC three. The teacher evaluations for K, K two, uh, grade fifth, it shows in the, um, the report cards, how are they doing in class? They need to have a minimum score of two in the different areas, language arts, math. And for grades six and twelve, students need a C minus, a grade C minus or above in English classes or in the ELD class, either one. Alternatively, the state have put out a new, um, another option, which is called the Optel, Observation Protocol for the Teacher of English Learners. And this is, uh, it's like, um, uh, two pages descriptor of the different, um, uh, features that a student, this, the student shows in the receptive language, listening and reading, and in the expressive language, speaking or writing. And it, this requires, is the same, uh, protocol, K to twelve. But for the students to, uh, be eligible to reclassify, they need a score of three or four. These scores corresponds to the levels of English language proficiency outlined in the LPAC. So this, the State Department has just, uh, presented this year, and it is one more option that we could have for Criterion Number Two. I'm gonna pass it on to Esau for Criterion Three and Four.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I just want to note for that Optel, it is very, very new, the state showed that in November, I believe. So training will be coming for teachers. It's really an ideal tool specifically when the grade does not demonstrate accurately the proficiency of the student, which we do see sometimes, especially when we have substitutes in classrooms, it's difficult to get a matching grade. I'm gonna move to next criteria. Criteria three is parent consultation, and this is really an alignment of language. It used to be recommendation, now the goal is to have a consistent consultation on a yearly basis. What our district has done to assure that that occurs is, in the elementary report cards, there is now an ELD grade to have that specific consultation every single year. And then lastly, Criterion Four, and this is what really took us data gathering and comparison. You might ask, well, why are we so late with the iReady? Well, we didn't have the data yet, this is our first year with iReady, and our department wanted to guarantee that no student, English learner, suffered based off the switch of using a different assessment. And now we can say with the data that every student who was proficient using the star, who was on their path to reclassify, is also proficient in iReady, so every student who was eligible for will be eligible this year to assure equity in this process. And that's why we're presenting at this moment versus at the beginning of the year. Uh, and that's really, really good news in terms of assuring that our students get a fair shake at reclassification. And then lastly, we've shared components of the reclassification criteria. But many, many members of our community, including MDEC, the SPED team, uh, within ELMA, and our Ed Services Cabinet Team as well. Yes, I believe that is the end of our reclassification review, and we're open for discussion.
Thank you so very much, thank you for the presentation, Board, do we have any questions? Trustee Reck- I'm so sorry, Trustee Reckler, I need to call for public comment first, thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Are there any public comments?
Yes, um, Jean Kit, please unmute yourself, can you? Please unmute yourself.
I'm just wondering if we missed a public comment on the Williams item, that's all.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. Board, do we have any board comments? I saw Trustee Reckler saying, and then Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, Trustee Reckler, go ahead, if we could get the timer up, please, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the presentation, um. So if I heard correctly, there, there are minimal changes to the actual form and function, except for this Optel. Is that now required by the state, or is that just?
Uh, no, it is not a requirement, it is a, another option. Uh, so I believe it says or, we do want to promote this, we believe that it will be a useful tool for teachers making a consultation for recommendation, and we do plan to train teachers using this Observation Protocol as well, but it is another option to meet that criteria.
Okay, thank you, point of order, we have a timer on questions.
You're absolutely right, I just realized that, so it's just three questions, Ms., um, Ms. Rosa, I'm sorry, I meant the timer for comments, not for questions. Trustee Reckler, do you have more questions?
I do, thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, so next is, on the template, how did you decide on this template, or what resources did you access to create it?
Other resources, uh, through, uh, federal process monitoring. Uh, we were reviewing our reclassification criteria, uh, certain recommendations were made. The one that stood out the most within this recommendation was the inclusion of the alt-LPAC in Criterion One, which in our old form, we did include, it just wasn't together, for example. And when that review, there's a window that we can update our forms, and we said, you know what? Why only change two letters? Let's improve communication with families, share with the MDEC, and invite their recommendations to improve communication, and with the hopes that it also enhances reclassification, because we believe that improving communication and conversations about reclassification will also lead to a higher increase in reclassification.
Okay, and then finally, what you showed to us is in English, uh, is this going to be avail- available in the home language?
At this moment, it is available in Spanish, uh, we will have to follow up with other languages. Uh, and quick plug in, it will be also presented at the Parents Conference this Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, you had questions?
Thank you, uh, first of all, thank you for the presentation. Could you speak about what is the professional development opportunities that are going to be developed for Criteria Two?
Can you repeat the question, Adam?
Yeah, sorry, what are we gonna, what's gonna be the professional development opportunities for Criteria Two specifically?
For Criteria Three and Four?
No, sorry, for Criteria Two, the new, the new, uh,
The Opto?
Yes.
So currently, we do have some resources offered by the state, so if you clicked on the state venue, there are some resources. What we'd like to do is, next year, we'd invite teachers to begin to use that Observation Protocol, um, especially when they're indecisive about a student grade. So we have a good percentage of students who are very close to reclassification, we're uncertain, and this tool will really help that process. So we only don't want to use it as a reclassification tool, everything really is in hindsight to increase and enhance instruction for English learners. So yes, it's mentioned here, and it's a tool that we really see using as an instructional tool to enhance supports and needs. Um, so next year is the first year that, this is our first year using the official tool, will be when we roll out that process officially, we might begin sooner with smaller pockets, but we're not there yet for district-wide, but you'll see that rollout next year.
Thank you, and are we offering, um, a lot of ELD professional development opportunities, though?
Uh, yes, uh, and there's, uh, the monitoring ELD is coming, three are coming, I don't know the dates off the top of my head, I believe one is tomorrow, Thursday, there's one tomorrow, uh, for ELD monitoring on elevation, and two more are coming within elevation as well. Those monitoring forms are used also as a way to gauge student reclassification goals, for example. Um, we are towards semester two, so there's a little bit less professional development towards the end of the year, it gets really busy. Uh, but we provided a steady amount of reclassification opportunities, um, consistently.
Thank you, thank you so much, both.
Thank you so much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, I have two questions. Well, I'm sorry, there's questions on this side, go ahead, uh, Trustee Palcar.
Um, so I was just, I just wanted to clarify something, so the LPAC, the proficiency level is being moved from level four to level three, right, or?
No, so for English learners, the expectation is that they meet an overall LPAC level four. Uh, the criteria for level three is when a student with, an English learner specific with an IEP who has severe needs, uh, is taken an alternate LPAC assessment, so the test in, in itself is different for that particular student, based on the IEP. And for that particular student, the requirement is an LPAC overall level three. And we wanted to make sure that families knew that there was a distinction. That's why we wanted to make sure that it was aligned with everyone else's expectations from the get-go versus that, like, the old one, it was at the bottom of the page. So this time, it's right at the top with everybody else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, are there any other questions? You actually asked one of my questions and it got answered, so thank you for that, so now I just have one question. And, and let me know if this is still how it works. When I first enrolled my oldest daughter into kindergarten, we had, they didn't have TK back then, so in kindergarten, I had to fill out this form, and it said, what language do you primarily speak at home? And then it said, do you speak another language at home, there were two questions, right? So at the time, we spoke French at home. It was not our primary language that we spoke at home, but we spoke French at home. If I would have put down that we spoke a primary language at home as French, would she then have been enrolled in EL, or would she then have been able to take a test to see if she needed EL? Is that how it works still?
Yeah, it's not one question, I'm, the one question can lead to a, a phone call potentially to, for further clarification. It's three questions, and if it's two of those three questions, if the student speaks, if you speak, if it's spoken at home, then we do an initial LPAC. Now, a good portion of our families are initially fluent, and if they pass the initial LPAC with a score of three, only on the initial, then they're considered IFAP, Initial Fluent English Proficient, and are not supposed to be in any type of EL services, designated ELD is not required, and integrated ELD is not required, it's like an uh, super reclassification in the moment.
Okay, so if I have a kindergartner, or let's say I have a TK, a TK'er, when I'm testing that TK student, their proficiency, is it at a TK level? Because I know TK'ers that my TK'er wouldn't have been able to pass if I would have said, read this, right? So, or say this, or, so how is the test, what does the test look like, does that make sense?
Yeah, this, four domains, uh, for TK, you won't see very much writing, for example, or reading, but it will be mostly listening and speaking, a lot of pointing in the test, for example, when you're asking questions, it's a lot of pointing. For TK in particular, though, uh, let's say a student is not considered fluent proficient at TK, the state does require us to give that student another opportunity at kindergarten. If the student tests in kindergarten, that's really the official state report that we turn in. TK is really more to prepare our district to what number of English learners might be coming in as kindergartners. So kindergarten is really the main grade, where if you're not considered initial fluent, uh, English proficient, then you start becoming an English learner. And if you want to review any of that conversation, we do send out three parent notification letters. Parents have the right to ask for a retest, for example, before the summative LPAC test, which occurs later the year, which is February. And that summative LPAC test is when it becomes super official, right? So you can't retract that, now you've had three parent notification letters, but assessed if you started at TK at least twice, and this would be your third time uh, demonstrating that you are not fluent English proficient. And at that time, it becomes very difficult, uh, to inform the state that there's been some type of mistake or error. Uh, I think the evidence will now demonstrate the student needs language proficiency support for success, and that's where we come in, in terms of, how does that support look like? In our district, it looks in the easiest possible way during designated ELD time, which is thirty minutes, at bare minimum, K twelve at bare minimum, uh, but very often, it can be more than that.
Thank you so very much. Board, we are now moving to comments, are there any comments? We're gonna go Trustee Reckler and work our way around, Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you, so first is a comment on the iReady. Um, the board never, has never received a presentation on the iReady. Uh, ASAP received a presentation on iReady, but the board never did. Um, I just happened to be in ASAP meeting, and they had a presentation. I have some concerns about iReady, from what I understand about it, and- And also I feel like we need a presentation on this. I feel like we're tying a lot of systems to it. We're tying a lot of dollars to it in a potentially intractable way. And when they raise costs, we're stuck. So I've got some concerns about that. Um, next thing is, is that, you know, of course, uh, coming back to this discussion here. Um, it is important that home, all home languages somehow be able to be populated into this form. And that I sure hope that, uh, MDEC and the dual language parents, uh, it wasn't only reviewed with them, but that they were allowed to give input. It wasn't really they really feel that from what I saw on the slide. So I hope that they were allowed to give input. And then finally, the, the coloring is great, but I'm curious about the sites and whether if these are going to be printed on site, if everybody has a printer that can print in color and that it needs to be available electronically as well. Um, and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Clark Gonzalez-Loy.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. Thank you both for your presentation. Um, I want to start just by um, agreeing with what you both said about the OPTA. I think that it's going to be a really great tool, uh, that is going to support our students because I think what you both said about how a test is not a good reflection of a student's English proficiency is so true. And I never reclassified because my writing wasn't strong, yet I was fluent in English. Um, so I completely appreciate, I think the CDEs changed there. And I think our implementation of that is going to be, uh, a game changer. I would just, uh, I definitely also agree and recognize what you both said, though, that we want to be careful on the rollout of that because we also don't want it to be like Ms. LaFosse said, Corinna LaFosse, an opinion by an educator, right? Because it could also lead to hurting us if the opinion is on someone's observation of English, which might not be correct, right? So I appreciate the, uh, recognition of professional development, um, and I would love to see that, uh, so that I learn myself. Um, I actually was going to talk about iReady at, at the beginning when we adopted iReady, I had a lot of concerns about it because it was yet another tool that we were putting on educators. Uh, it was a big tool, but I've actually, now that I've seen it in practice, um, it actually provides really great things for teachers. Um, and I think that I've heard now feedback from teachers that is the opposite. At first there was a lot of concern about it. Um, and now actually hearing that it's really helpful once you dig into the tools that it provides. Um, and it also adds a new level of rigor that AR did not have, right? Which has had national uh, complaints about, right? So actually, I'm glad we're moving in that direction. I would love to see a presentation a- a- as well. Um, and, and thank you both again, uh, for the presentation. Thank you, President Smith Folds.
Thank you so much. Any comments on this slide? I do want to say thank you very much for the presentation. I, as an English teacher, English is the hardest language to learn. It is. It's hard to learn for everyone, but it's hard because of all the rules and it's hard because we do crazy things like two, two and two. Right? Spelled different, same thing. So it is one of the hardest languages to learn. So the students who are bilingual and are able to capture English and another language in their home language, they really are amazingly brilliant kids, right? So I appreciate this, um, resurgence in reclassification and making it so user-friendly. Because that's the point. We don't want to turn kids or families away from having this dual language, right? To be able to really capture the English language and capture and keep and retain and use their home language. So I appreciate it. Um, Dr. Hers, I agree that we should have a presentation with iReady. So that would be good. Thank you and come back anytime because I really love to learn more about our English language learners and what we're doing in our sites. Um, all right, board, we are now ready to move on to our second discussion item. Uh, you two, uh, lovely people are gonna stay and do the second presentation too. So we're moving to item F2, which is the International Newcomer Program update. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Once again. We're presenting the work at West Contra Costa Unified School District. Uh, we'll review how long it's been here, what it is, and the biggest, the why. First, it definitely aligns with our district's vision. Talking about big, brave and bold programs, the newcomers international model is one of those particular programs. It focuses on equity and access and quality for all with rigor and college career as one of their goals as well. Next slide. It's innovative in the way ELD is done. In terms of, well, what's the difference between ELD one and the internationals newcomer program? Well, really, the international newcomer program does ELD all the time. It's not just ELD one and two, and then you go to the rest of your courses. There's a key component here where teachers collaborate during the school day with focused, themed, ELD standards-aligned, newcomer-focused curriculum, self-created, of course, using district resources. That's the special ingredient. Of course, they're supported by the international newcomers coach and program and have a bunch of fantastic coaching in alignment with resources from Oakland, San Francisco, all the way to New York City. You'll see a little bit more of those models here in terms of our next slide, number three. Well, once again, the why. Well, we've noticed that the traditional system, even though there's portions that works, sometimes is not as strong as we desire it to be. Now that does take a lot of commitment from teachers, students, families, our district to make these bold, brave practices occur. Planning, collaborating, thematic lessons, meeting on a daily basis from attendance to legal matters to learning how to read and write in English and presenting in person at the very end of the year. And I believe some of our school board members have attended those end of year presentations. Where you have a newcomer present in English in their first year in the country. So we invite you again for the end of the year here. It is also particularly a secondary school model. So we are the first district to do a middle school model. In fact, we're the first district in the country to do a middle school model, but it really focused as a high school model. And you'll see, you'll see that transition in our next slide. Slide four, which kind of talks about how this newcomer model began. It started at Richmond High School in 2018. With a seed of how can we improve services and education and instruction for newcomers as a team? Creating an identity where teachers felt they were newcomer teachers, a time, focused time that aligned to ELD standards. And with a particular goal of increasing the graduation rate for newcomers. Often time dropping now because they were working hard, we're working at nighttime, inconsistency and moving schools. That was our biggest goal at that time. Now, almost more than five years later, we've grown. After the Richmond High opening, we opened at Helms, creating a pathway of instruction. And then this year, in particular, we have a soft launch at John F. Kennedy. And we're always inviting all schools and any teachers to join the newcomer networks PD that also occurs almost on a monthly basis. So any teacher can join in that collaboration time to align those resources. At this time, now that we've grown from that first cohort of 50 students, now we serve over 300 newcomer students. That means students who've been in the country two years or less and are English learners. Over 300 students, that's over 62% of our newcomer population in our district, which is super impactful. And this is in grade seven through 12. Um, you'll notice a little bit of our success with this specific group of students in our district in our following slide. You'll notice there's a lot of successes. Now the A through G eligibility rate quickly took a skyrocket leap because A through G courses specifically were created for newcomer ELA courses. Of course, the contingent is that it has to be paired with strong ELD throughout their other content areas. And that's why that collaboration period is so vital to ensure that that English class or ELD class counts as an A through G English course. We also noticed after that first year that students still needed a specific ELD course. Specifically, students who did not know how to read and to write in their own home language. So you'll notice the quick increase in the drop for that particular reason. But the big success story here is the graduation rate. The first graduating class was 100% in 21, 22. That's a quick, quick contrast to the one previously when it comes to newcomers, which is 48%. Now we're in the 90% range. You'll notice last year we're in the 90. This year we're on that pace as well. In comparison to those graduation rates in California, which is 86.4, that is an amazing feat for folks who have been in the country less than six years, learning a, a language to graduate on time is incredible. Uh, when it comes to language proficiency, there's also a slight increase. So the, the, there is an over increase of 23% of English learners increased in terms of the LPAC level. Uh, that does not correlate to reclassification because reclassification is very difficult to do within four years. But we do see language proficiency growth. But don't take my word for it in terms of success. We had many students write comments about how important, how game-changing the internationals newcomer program is in their life and in their education. Uh, Ms. Mary Ann LaFosse will read some of those comments.
These comments are from, um, 12 graders at Richmond High from various countries, Guatemala, Mexico, Philippines, El Salvador, Egypt. Being in the academy is like being in a family. It's a small program, so the teachers can easily check in with students to see how they're feeling. Academically, teachers give us a lot of resources to succeed in the classes. Emotionally, teachers are always concerned with how I'm doing. Also, the teachers collaborate and talk so that all teachers in the program know what kind of support I need. One more comment. I'm shy and I was afraid on my first day at Richmond High. The people around me were all new people. Most of them spoke Spanish, but I speak Tagalog, Tagalog, and I didn't have anyone to speak it with. Now I have learned some Spanish words and have made friends. And I'm especially improved learning English in my history and English classes. Particularly, the teachers make me practice without using Google Translate.
Thank you. Uh, it's not the same when you have the students, but Mary Ann, fantastic. You, you voiced the students eloquently. Educators feel the same way. And I'll just read one educator comment. This is a teacher, a history teacher at Richmond High School. One of the biggest impacts of the internationals academy has been a sense of community that I see students building in the school. Students arrive in our academy at different times throughout the year, depending on when they arrive to the country. When we receive new students, I see our current students making sure that they know how to find their classes. They encourage other students to participate in class and find common interests within each other. Having an academy where newcomers feel seen is important and humanizing for our students that are navigating life in a new country. Uh, next slides, I believe the next one after that as well. Fantastic faces. Lastly, uh, we've received national recognition for having this program. Um, ACE, uh, the Newcomer Education in California Journal actually gave us a shout out in terms of incredible newcomer schools and cited our schools here at West Contra Costa Unified School District and encourage everyone to, to read the article. It definitely highlights not only students, but also teachers and our district in terms of being top-notch in the nation. And lastly, when it comes to budget, I know that's one of the top items is that we've definitely paired LCAP funds alongside with our Cal New, uh, grants. Uh, and which has made it very important to make this program sustainable. So with partnering LCAP and Cal New funding, we do see this program as a sustainable model in our district. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Board, do we have any questions? Oh, no, public comment first. Sorry about that.
Yes, we have one. Our next public speaker is Guadalupe and Leana. Please unmute yourself.
Hello? Hello? Okay. Well, my name is Guadalupe and I think I just had a question. So my question is, how are we prioritizing our newcomers for the academy at Richmond High, um, as they're registering new into our district? I think that's been my concern. Knowing that we have an abundance of newcomers, um, coming into our district and knowing that Richmond High has a lot of resources for them through their academy, but seeing how, you know, the Kennedy might not, how we, um, prioritize and how are students able to come in and get priority to actually, um, register into Richmond High and be part of that academy if that's where they'll best be served. Um, that was my only comment. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so very much. Board, do we have any questions? Okay, we're gonna start with trustee Reckler. Go ahead.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation. So, uh, a little bit of a follow-up on, on the caller. Um, so how I think you said that 62% of the newcomers are in the, uh, 62% of the newcomers in the district are in an academy. How do they find it? And then how do we get more newcomers into the program?
So we strategically went to schools where there are a lot of newcomers. So Richmond High School and John F. Kennedy and Helms. And now Dejounte have a significant number of newcomers. In fact, most of the newcomers are at these four particular schools. So that's one easy way to recruit. They're already at the particular school. Now, it is also an option for any student to ask for a transfer based on program need. And our office helps with that communication. When folks receive the EO notification letter, it's one of those particular options. Um, we also recruit when the, the program is running low in numbers. Uh, we do notice that folks who live closer to those programs are the ones attending. But we do have a couple of students, more than a couple, that are making that trip because they do want to be part of a newcomer particular program. And lastly, uh, even students within the school, it is an option. So it is super important that this is one of the many options at that particular school to receive services. So there's no automatic, uh, enrollment process. Students have the choice to enter a newcomer program or join a traditional ELD model, which we used to have. That's another option as well. And some students do choose that other option.
And then are there programs at the elementary level? I could have sworn that Grants had a program.
Yeah, all the programs at the elementary level are not connected or associated with the internationals model. So think about it as, yes, they serve newcomers, but the way the program works is completely different. So at this time, we are trying to align ourselves with a variety of schools that have a self-proclaimed newcomer program to create alignment and see how they're supporting newcomers. This year in particular, we were able to, uh, give every specific newcomer a specific newcomer curriculum, imagined language and learning. So they have specific curriculum for them just for them. It's not the ELD, uh, component. A grant did use to have, and I believe this is what you're thinking of, is a signed newcomer teacher in which newcomers went into her class on a rotating basis. Uh, so it was a newcomer teacher who, who served only newcomer students. In particular at Grant, and I believe that's the one you're thinking of. In particular at Grant, and I believe that's the one you're thinking of.
So is there an internationals model for elementary? Or?
I would say that, uh, there are a variety of newcomer models, none of which are internationals. So international is really the partnership of P D at the secondary level, which leads to how to create courses that are A through G, how to collaborate it when you have a variety of content areas. At the elementary, you have one teacher that can teach a variety of subjects. And now it's, it's really planning on blocking newcomers and placing newcomers in small group instruction to give them an enhanced support, uh, and instruction. And then lastly, if you're using that small group instruction, now you can use a specific designed curriculum for newcomers as well. So that's a little bit of the, how the programming works at elementary versus how it works at secondary.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Clark Gonzalez Hoy, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, are we providing training to our office staff and administrators when a student enrolls in the school that they will give the option to that family outside of Richmond High and Kennedy and Helms?
We do meet with counselors and have several counselors trained that connect with recommendations and consultations, um, some of which is do we have this offering of a newcomer program at JFK, at Richmond High School? It can also be of other services such as the A B twenty one, twenty one, which is option to stay a fifth year, uh, and that's state law. So we do have conversations with counselors. Uh, our enrollment office shares a brochure. Um, we can do more definitely to, to reach out. Uh, but our programs are on, on the good side full, especially at the high school level. A little bit of where we struggle at, at the middle school, considering that there's a, a lot of uh, elementary students who are losing to other particular school sites. And it's hard to, uh, identify students within that segue family who are coming in as newcomers as well. But we do go to elementary sites that have the most newcomers to give that, like, you know what, you really should go to Helms. There's a newcomer program. And we do that kind of in person and we visit classrooms.
Thank you. Just, uh, following up a little bit on that. So if a family, let's say, enrolls, goes to Deansa High School and enrolls their student at Deansa, will they get in that moment information of like, just so you know, we offer this program as well? Or is that something that waits until they meet with the counselor? Or like, do they get it as soon as they're enrolling?
We suggest and highly recommend that it is something that is given uh, by the counselor, uh, once enrolled. So the difficulty part is, uh, we ha, we don't have a central enrollment system. So students do enroll first at, let's say, Deansa. Uh, the sooner technically, the better. And oftentimes that information occurs once you're already enrolled into a school, especially when you're creating classes. So a little bit of our struggle is that we don't have a central enrollment system for newcomers. We do have an office, which much of newcomers family come to get services to support for enrollment. And that's where you for sure get that messaging. At the school site, uh, they can, we rec, highly recommend it. I can't personally say that everyone gets that messaging. What I can say is that every English learner does receive it at bare minimum through a notification uh, upon being identified as a new English learner.
Thank you. Uh, and then following up on the questions Trustee Reckler was asking about K six. Could you talk about the department's vision for the expansion of the creation of an actual newcomer program, K through six? Just because I think what we're trying to dig on is that there isn't one, and one that exists, right? So, uh, what is the vision for the district in the future? So important to obviously many of us here for the expansion down, uh, to K six.
We're working on, on a, on a concrete vision. The vision really is for the every newcomer, wherever you're at in any particular school with a specific newcomer program or not, has the resources and a trained teacher to deliver appropriate enhanced focused designated E O D instruction for newcomers. That's why we really vetted a newcomer curriculum. So even if you couldn't drive all the way across town, your teacher at your school site, your homeschool has those particular resources and those families can use those resources also at home. So that was step one of that vision. Now, schools have different populations. So, for example, you might have two newcomer students in second grade, five in fifth and four in sixth. You're just not going to lump everyone. So each school really needs to be creative, thoughtful in how they provide those plans. We've kind of developed a plan and recommendations with those schools in mind of how you should block or small group or strategically prepare to support your newcomers at the beginning or a certain part of the day. Depending on how your demographic of students changes every particular year, uh, for schools. So it's, uh, it's not like everyone's joining one academy at elementary. That's what I really want to make clear. It, it doesn't look like that. We don't have the numbers, uh, to do that at any school besides Grant. Um, and then Grant would have a, kind of their old model would be that's if you were thinking of any academy right now, we're looking at Grant for those particular reasons. But no other school is able to sustain any type of major newcomer academy at that level. It would be a strategic newcomer focused program on how to deliver those supports.
Thank you. President Smith Folds, I definitely have comments after.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? I have a question. Um, and it's about elementary. So if I enroll as a newcomer in third grade, right? I come into the country and I'm in third grade, but if I'm not considered a new, I'm not considered a newcomer after two years, right? But what if I haven't acquired everything that I needed to acquire because I'm in a school that doesn't have a program that focuses on newcomers, right? So I'm sitting in a classroom for, from third grade until fifth grade to where I matriculate out into middle school. But I'm sitting there just picking up ten percent, five percent, three percent of whatever is being spoken and what lessons are being given. What do, what's the safety net there? Where, how do we, how do we deliver high quality education if we don't have anything at the elementary school level, particularly talking to this kid who enrolled in third grade? But in two years, they're not considered a newcomer, but we haven't given them everything that we say newcomers deserve to have. Can you reconcile that for me? What do we do? I'm complete.
This is the vision for that response. Uh, and it doesn't only include newcomers. What you hit on, on point is to assure that every student, uh, including English learners and newcomers, has a very strong instructional, uh, support and focused uh, yield, E O, uh, D, uh, instruction. That's the goal. Now, next year, I know that's maybe a different conversation. A little bit of that vision is incorporation of the new interim L P A C, which allows us to use that metric as a support for instruction and a way to communicate to parents their growth using the L P A C metric that identified them as an English learner as in the first place. Um, now that we do have a newcomer curriculum, that's a little bit of additional P D we can do next year. This is the first year. I want to say this is the first year we've had a specific newcomer curriculum. So we have seen major growth within schools. We have our early adopters with that system as well. We do see that expanding for next year now that it's a little bit more common and we have teacher leaders or reporting great things about it with that expansion. Um, our goal is to keep doing the walkthroughs, collect schedules, assure every student is, has a response on their monitoring form if they don't have growth. And we do have those documents through the E O and R F F monitoring forms. So if a student is not growing, every student has a teacher response to how that student will be supported, supported or has been supported to show growth.
Thank you very much. Have you seen situations at elementary school sites where other students are the teachers, the helpers, the aides, the translators, the, have you seen that on elementary school sites? Cause I know I have, so I, I'm, I'm assuming that you have too. And if you've seen that, what's the impact to those students who are now carry the burden of being the newcomers? Only way of communicating, like literally only way of communicating. What's that impact?
Well, we believe, uh, it's, we have to be very careful that it is not a burden. So we believe multilingualism is an asset. Uh, teachers can, are supposed to use students as assets in their classrooms. It does not mean that that particular student will be doing all the translations or reading right next to them every day. But it's super important to build multilingual relationships within the classroom. It ties a little bit to the international's philosophy of how to use students as the biggest assets. And in fact, it's one of our D L I philosophies of using students as the biggest way to grow language in both English and Spanish and Mandarin. Uh, but we also do need to be very careful. So if, if they're being used for other ways besides those relational pieces, we do not recommend that. Um, and that needs to be clarified the best possible way. And that's a little bit of the P D when it comes to around of how to do small group instruction, how to do paired up groups. Uh, all that P D, that's what that P D is for, is that you're not sticking someone, a student with all of that responsibility. No, that's not the student's responsibility. It's responsibility of the teacher to create an environment where students, e- every single student has something to give. So the Spanish speaker or another speaker is giving as much to the other student as the other student is giving to the Spanish speaker or another speaker as well.
Thank you for that. Board, are there any comments? Okay. We're going to go to Trustee Reckler first and then Clerk Gonzalez Hoy. Go ahead, Trustee Reckler.
Once again, thank you for the presentation. Um, you know, at least at the high school level from the data that you've presented, this is working and it's working quite well. And there are some really natural things about why it's working. It's a cohort. They're seen, they're supported. There's daily professional development and planning time together. I mean, there's all these things that naturally work in having these students together in one place, sharing the same experience, I think is very powerful. So, uh, I've always been a fan of this program and I would like to see more kids in it because it's working. It's obviously working. I think that there is an opportunity to look at the elementary level and maybe Grant is the home-based school and schools that surround Grant. Maybe if you're, if you're less than two years in the country or you're a new arrival, you automatically come to Grant. You don't go to your homeschool and that becomes the magnet or, you know, like a newcomer magnet for elementary. I mean, if you're having this success at the high school level, I think that if it starts earlier, you can even have more success because you'll have so many years of um, working with students very directly and in a very intentional way. So I think there's opportunity for some really interesting planning and thoughts to come forward. And I thank you for the work and I look forward to seeing what you come up with. Thank you.
Clerk Gonzalez Hoy, go ahead, please.
Thank you, President Smith Folds. I also want to thank you both for yet another great presentation. Um, and I want to just appreciate the work that the International's program is doing and the expansion that you're both leading. Uh, I mean, I think that's wonderful and I think that expanding it to Kennedy where we heard there were so many newcomer students, um, is the right thing to do. So I'm really appreciative of that and I agree. The data, I think, shows that we are a model um, that I think nationwide they should look at for newcomer students. Um, so I wanted to start with that. Um, I also know that you both know I hold a lot of respect for both of you because I share a similar story to both of you. Uh, so what I'm about to say, please don't take it as towards you both. Um, I think it speaks about our district in general, Dr. Hirst. I think that us not having a newcomer program in the element, elementary school is failing a lot of students. Um, a lot of people, I think, see my body language. I think I get uncomfortable with the idea of not starting elementary because I think we have data where we're failing hundreds of kids. And I think that maybe there's not a single school that has the numbers to start a program. But I think that there are so many students out there. I think we could start a program. Um, if we ask students to move to those schools because they'll be served differently, right? So I want to be able to hopefully focus our resources to support the department to create that. Because I think otherwise, high schools can sometimes be too late. Um, if by the time they get to middle school or high school, that's when they're getting the resources. Um, I also think that the idea of giving teachers the resource to do that work for newcomer students is, to be honest, not a good solution. And I'll just say it very frankly, I think it's a waste of resources because teachers don't know how to support a newcomer that comes to this country new. Unless you are a Spanish speaker or a speaker that speaks that language and has been trained on how to do it as a bilingual teacher, then it really makes it actually al- almost harder because then you have to learn a new tool. Then honestly, teachers don't have the time to do now. So I almost feel like let's take those resources and let's put it into a newcomer program in elementary school. And I apologize, President Smith Folds, going over the time. Um, you all know, this is like the one issue that actually got me into the advocacy world. Um, because I texted to Hirst, for the last fourteen years, I've seen the failure of our elementary program for newcomer program for new, for newcomer students. And I know our two wonderful speakers relate to that and empathize and know that. But I think that it's a crisis that we hear every single year from teachers that, hey, I have yet another student that I don't know how to support and they sit in my room day after day and a curriculum's honestly not going to help me move the needle for them. So we have to just figure out how to invest the resources correctly to be able to support them, uh, moving forward. Uh, but all that, thank you again. Um, sorry, I like said it towards you guys, but it's not towards you both. Please know it's obviously a systemic problem that we have to fix though, because I don't want to go a fifteenth year with this problem still in existence. And I apologize to the board for going over. Thank you, President Smith Folds.
It's okay. Thank you so much, Clerk Gonzalez Hoy. Any other comments on this slide? Thank you for your presentation. I think that what you're hearing from the board, the majority of the board is our heart lies in that elementary part, right? Because if we can catch the kids and give them the support and the families the support that they need and everyone rallies around these kids, then when they're brand new into the country, they feel the love of the community and the support. And to your point, Mr. Roscoe, it changes the dynamic and the culture of the classroom, right? But, but that comes with resources. That comes with being able to look at a teacher and say, this is how we're going to help. Because the teacher feels helpless too. So now you got a kid who feels helpless. You have a teacher who feels helpless because they can't help them. And then you have a classroom who's like, well, I want to include so and so, but I don't know how to do it. So now you have other kids that feel helpless and then it's just, that's the cycle that we have to stop, right? So if we put someone in the classroom or if we take the kids and move them to whatever the answer is, it has to be an answer that's cultivated in value, love, respect, and the idea that I see you. But I also see you and know your value in the classroom. So, and this is coming from a personal experience. I met a newcomer in elementary school this year for the first time, for the first time for me, for the first time. This kid's amazing. This kid has taught me more Spanish than I've ever learned before because we're having, we're, it's forced communication, but it's done in love. Cause I want to be able to talk to this kid and this kid wants to be able to talk to me, right? But seeing other fifth graders taking out and trying to use Google Translate, right? And then having to go through another student to be able to ask this student something and it, it's, to your point, it may not be burdensome, but it is a lot of work on the other kid, the other kid in the room who may speak the language of our newcomer. And they have to shoulder that responsibility because they don't want to see their friend fail. They don't want to see their friend not feel comfortable inside the classroom. So it's, I think this is one of those topics that weighs heavy on everyone because I think everyone feels a level of helplessness. And we have to think outside of the box and we have to get really creative really quickly. Because to Clerk Gonzalez Hoy's point, we cannot wait to middle school. We cannot wait to high school and we have to be able to say, we support you, we see you, we value you, and this is what we can provide for you. So, thank you so much for your presentation. This is the start of a good conversation that we need to de, dive deeper into and have. and have more discussion and action behind it. Because to Clerk Gonzalez's point, we can't go year fifteen, right? So what are we gonna do not to hit year fifteen to really have some resources behind it? Thank you so very much again. I really appreciate it. And we are now moving, board, to consent item. But we are going to flip it because we're gonna take consent item number eight first. Because we want to make sure that if there are any questions, that we can get those questions answered. But we can also let people go home and have their time, reclaim their time. So thank you so much. Thank you for waiting. And, Trustee Reckler, you pulled consent item C8. Would you like to speak to that, please?
Yes, thank you very much. I'll go straight to the BACR contract with Lincoln Elementary School. And my comment is as follows. The dates of service began August tenth, twenty twenty-three through June seventh, twenty twenty-four. Yet the contract is coming to us on April tenth. So first, has this, you know, we have a obvious disconnect between the date of service and when it's coming to the board. And then on the dollars for fifty-three-nine, is that per-rated or is that for the whole period? And is the contract per-rated if it begins later?
Thank you for the question, Trustee Reckler. We've been looking into these contracts that are coming late. And this is the entire amount of the contract according to how it's written for the full year of services. We had confirmed, so we went through thoroughly these lists. The reason why principals are here to talk to you today is because we reached out to every principal that had a predated contract. We dug into the reasons why. We explained to them that they needed to come to the board to potentially answer questions because protocol hadn't been followed. This particular contract is using community schools grant monies. I'm not exactly sure why it's so late coming to, to the board. But we have not released any funds related to this contract. So we've also reached out to our vendors who are allowing their staff to work without approved contracts. Because it's mind-boggling that vendors are sending staff to schools every day, even though they aren't receiving any payment from us. So we're trying to work it from both sides, educate our principals, and also examine and refine our processes. But you are right, this contract did start at the beginning of the year. It is over fifty thousand dollars and it should not have started with prior to board approval. But we have not allocated a penny towards this contract because it is not approved.
Okay, thank you. So I don't have any more questions on that. Do you want me to go through the rest of the contract packet? Okay, Bay Area Community Resources, Dover Elementary, same thing, November twenty-twenty-three. Once again, I don't care about six thousand dollars, but you know, this began in November and now we're in April. And then for BACR, okay, so that one begins tomorrow. Lincoln, we talked about. Riverside is the same thing. It began in August. Okay, then Contra Costa Interfaith Transitional Hope Solutions, which begins tomorrow and goes through nine-thirty. I don't, I can't recall contracts going past the fiscal year, the end of the fiscal year. So does this in fact go past the end of the fiscal year? And then I have some questions on the math on this. If you go deep into the back packet on this, they give you a prorata, they don't give you a page number, but they give you a pro forma on how this adds up to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And it does add up to two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but it doesn't add up the same way that you guys have it. So they say that there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the ARP homeless children and youth versus what you're gonna pay staff to run it. So it adds up to two hundred, but I'd like to understand like what the difference is there. And the reason is because this, this amount that you're gonna send out for gift cards and rent and all of those things, that's great. But I want to make sure that we have the right number so that we don't get dinged federally. Somewhere down the line, someone's gonna come back and go, hey, you said it was seventy-five, but it was really a hundred and fifty. Or, you know, I just am not really quite sure how, how the math is working on that. The other thing is that the U.S. Department of Education strongly encourages LEAs to have strong internal controls on these gift card, rent subsidies. You know, they're looking for like a receipt system or something like that. So I'm wondering if you are confident that you have the system or the vendor has the system to track these payments? You know, I think it's a great thing. I'm psyched to see this. But what I'm concerned about, and I don't a hundred percent know how this works, but somebody comes back in and asks to see, you know, they want the receipts and, you know, we, we just don't have it. So that's my comment on that one. Same thing on Mindful Life. I mean, once again, it's not the dollar amount, it's eighty-five hundred dollars. So that's all of that. And the reason why I'm, I'm concerned about it is because, once again, we don't know where the dollars are. You're in a fiscally fragile place. And good accounting is really important. And then if we have people working in schools that are not being paid, that is deeply, deeply concerning to me. Can we get in trouble for that? I mean, the state of California is very pro-worker. And I think if they knew this, they would not be terribly happy about it. I also don't know about if there's insurance liability because of that or a whole other, did they go through fingerprinting? I mean, like, how, you know, like, it seems to me like there's a series of steps and part of the steps aren't being, you know, there, it's just not aligned properly. So those are my concerns about those. And then I want to talk about the legal contracts which are being extended. First, are you, are you, is, as of today, can you tell me, is legal expenses more or less than last year and are you on budget?
Hey, would you like me to answer? Just for clarity, I, I could provide you with some context with the contracts if you would like. But if you'd like to leave it at comments, that's fine too. I can reply by email. In terms of the legal contracts, we are keeping track. I don't have a figure here for you, but I'm happy to provide that after pulling our current expenditures to date. The one contract that you have on here is not a new contract. We needed a different object code. But we are asking to increase ORBAX. So I understand your concern and I'm happy to bring more detailed information forward.
Okay, thank you. And then there is one AALRR contract, which seems like it happened in the, it started already or it's for training. It's not for very much, but once again, I'm just trying to align, you know, like the date with when, when things have started. And that's it. Those are all my comments on contracts.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, are you moving this item?
I am. I move that we approve the contracts.
Thank you so very much. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, did I call for public comment?
You don't need public comment on.
No, I don't do public comment on this. Okay, thank you. Is there a second to move this item?
Second.
Thank you. Board, do we have any comments from the board? Hold on one second. You're good, right? Do you have a public comment? No? Yes, you're good. Okay, great. Trustee Reckler, you have a comment?
I do, thank you. So again, I think that there's opportunity to align, simplify this process. And I'm not a hundred percent sure what the answer is. It's a lot of paperwork. I want to, I want to think of ways to streamline it and, and make it simpler for everyone. So I'm not, I'm actually not looking for more. I'm looking for less. So I just want, I want to make sure that that's clear. But that it, that it works well for everyone. Thank you.
Any other comments? I have a comment. So first of all, thank you so very much. I want to thank staff for the work that they do to gather these because you're at the end of the train, not at the beginning of the train. So because you're at the end of the train and you see something and you catch it and then you go backwards, right? So it's like, okay, let's figure out where the system has a gap in it and then you shut that gap. We have seen more cleanup in contracts and practices and policies this year than I think ever before. And that is huge because that not only gets us out of trouble, it keeps us out of trouble. So for the system cleanup, I want to thank you very much for that. And it, it needs to be acknowledged out loud. Because the reason we see so much now is because the CBO office is so transparent and coming and really educating the board around contracts and consultants and how the budget works and how the money is allocated. And so to your credit, thank you for the immense amount of education. And further to your credit, thank you for the consistent cleanup about what we see and what we do. To the credit of all the administrators, thank you for being receptive and open to changing the way things are done. So you can ensure that your sites get the best that they can have. So what we're seeing now is this is what cleanup looks like. This is what system changes looks like. It's slow, but it doesn't mean we're not moving. It takes consistency over time equals change. So what we're doing is we're creating those systems, refining those systems, maintaining those systems so we can actually see the change. And again, CBO Moses, to your credit, every time you come and you're like, I get it. I'm listening, I'm working, I'm showing like this is how we're changing and how we're cleaning it up. To the credit of all the administrators, thank you for saying, yeah, I get it. We were able to do it this way before, but it's not the way that we wanted to be the optimum way of doing it. So we're gonna change. So it is, this is just a comment of thank you. Thank you for creating the change and holding it to the point to where we don't have to continue to do it. This becomes our norm. So thank you, everyone. Okay, we need a vote. All right, so we're gonna vote on item C8 and that is contracts. Trustee Palcar.
Um, I abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Abdugarparvo.
No.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, no.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving to consent item, we'll go back to the top, C5. Board, it is now nine forty-three. I think we're gonna have to push to about ten fifteen. Are we okay with that? Sorry. Can I get a motion to push to just ten fifteen? Maybe we won't take all the time to ten fifteen, but can we have an extension to ten fifteen?
I move that we extend till ten fifteen.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we go to the vote to extend to ten fifteen with the hope that we will get out at ten o'clock? Trustee Palcar, your vote, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Abdugarparvo.
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, no.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee, trustee clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We're gonna extend to ten fifteen with the hope that we get out at ten. And, okay, we are now on consent item C5. Trustee Reckler, you pulled this item?
I do. I just have a question about it. It says that the Power School plugin, plugin for Power School pushes into the parent portal. So I'm assuming that is ParentSquare. And I'd like to know that if it's adaptable to another similar parent portable, portal or what parent portal means.
Good evening, trustee Reckler. This is Tracy. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. So this is specifically a plugin for Power School and it pushes to all of the Power School portals. So the admin portal, the student portal, and the parent portal. So we also have an integration with ParentSquare. So we'd have the option for reports to go wherever direction we want them to go. But this is a specifically a built-in for Power School and we'll, we'll go to the parent portal.
Okay, and when you say parent portal, that's just everything that's in there, the schedule, the grades, the whatever.
That's right. That's exactly right. Yeah, so this would give us the ability to build reports. So archive reports as well as ongoing reports, grad progress, elementary report cards, attendance letters, et cetera, et cetera, and push them into the parent portal. So the very same place where you would go and see attendance and grades and updates from teachers, you would also be able to view these reports that we are able to build ourselves.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. I'll go ahead and move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you so much. Board, do we have any comments? Oh, great. We don't do comments on this. All right, here we go. To the vote. Trustee Palcar.
I'm abstain.
Thank you so much. Trustee Abdugarparvo.
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. We are now moving to consent item number six, approval of fundraising activities. Trustee Reckler, this is your item.
Thank, thank you. So on Miravista Walkathon for twelve to four fifteen, it is not Miravista staff that is the sponsor, it's the PTA. So I'd like to amend that to put in Miravista PTA if that's okay with you. The next one is Valley View Oakland A's. There's no firm start date. It's April. We're now on April tenth and this is coming to us late. And then for Elserio High School, we have staff selling baked goods. This one I couldn't confirm, but I can't imagine we have staff having a bake sale. Nor does our board policy really seems very student-focused and focused on staff having fundraisers.
Thank you very much. Anyone want to move this item?
Can I get an answer? Is Elserio High School staff having a bake sale?
Oh, you framed that as a question. Okay. Is Elserio staff having a bake sale? That was the question.
I am trying to locate the backup. If you just give me one second, I have two sections here. No, that does look like it's a typo. It says that it's the class of twenty-twenty-five selling baked goods at Kingston's Farmer's Market. So it is not staff. It is indeed the students and we'll make that correction.
I can actually attest to that because I go to Kensington Farmer Market every Sunday and it is kids selling the baked goods. Would someone like to move the item now?
I'll move C6.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Board, we're gonna go to the vote. Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, no.
Thank you. Trustee Christian?
Yes.
Thank you. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes. Thank you very much. Board, we are now moving to, we're moving to comments from the Board of Education and future agenda items. We have two minutes apiece. And we are starting, anyone would like to start with their comments. Trustee Reckler, go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to make a recommendation to the comment card. First, I'm not sure why they're different colors, so I just stapled them together. They seem the same to me, but can't, can't tell. can't, can't tell. Anyway, I would like to add uh, for consideration, something to the comment card. One is if a person is going to speak in a different language, if there could be a little box that has translation and you check it so that the board has a little bit of time to prepare with headphones or another way so that they're prepared for translation. I've found a number of times that people have started talking and I'm still trying to get them on and I'm trying to find the the channel or whatever. So I think that might be helpful. And then the, the second thing I'd like to consider adding is that if the speaker is a student, they'll be prioritized so that they're not here until midnight. Because we had a couple of meetings when students came and spoke and they were here quite late. And if we had known they were students, perhaps they could have been um, pushed to the front of the meeting and they could have gotten home quicker. I'm sure they loved the democracy they saw that evening, but you know, I'm concerned about their sleep. Thank you.
Anyone else have comments? Uh, trustee Christian, go ahead, please.
Yes, I just wanted to say, you know, thank everyone for the presentation this evening. And just briefly, just give some quick highlights. Um, I like to see uh, the teacher workforce housing uh, on the future agenda uh, item. And then also I'd like to um, echo the words that was mentioned about the dual immersion uh, school. And I'd like to see that somewhere on a future item on agenda. And then um, also uh, Kennedy High School, I want to um, you know, echo the good words of the um, trade program there and that's uh, you know, they're doing a good job. And so um, you know, you know, it's a pathway where students don't go to college, but they go to a trade. And so trades play a major role in uh, in our district. And then also I want to echo, I mean, I want to mention about the safety meeting uh, for the district, for all those who are interested in attending the safety meeting will be, the next meeting will be April the twenty-fifth. And it would be at the facilities on Marina Bay. Um, and it starts at five thirty P M. And like to see you come out for the safety meeting, uh, voice your concerns. And then um, and then also I wanted to say, you know, you know, as we uh, continue to build on community schools and the wraparound uh, services for our students and parents, uh, community schools will play, you know, continue to play a great major role in our district. And so it's a lot of things that, you know, um, that we have to just, you know, the ones I mentioned, you know, tune in and so forth. And thank you. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Uh, for my comments, I wanted to just say a few words of appreciation for our school staff. Um, I think, so this week I was visiting a school and it was actually pretty late. Um, and a teacher was walking by and I was like, hey, how are you? And their first reaction was like, oh, I'm exhausted. Right? But they were actually heading into a meeting at four P M. to plan a field trip. And I think that just speaks about our staff right now. It's an exhaust, it's an exhausting time of the year, right? Very little breaks. It's been, you know, a full year of issues, yet they are still going. They're still planning amazing things for kids. Um, and you know, I think our programs are continuing, right? And I think, I just, I felt it in that moment, right? Like I saw this exhausted teacher but was still going that evening to plan this amazing filter for kids who had never been to the planetarium, right? So I just wanted to give teachers a quick shout out. I wanted to give our administrators a quick shout out because I know that, you know, this also it's a difficult time of year, but every day you're showing up early and leaving late, right? To ensure our kids are safe and they're getting the supports that they need. Um, and our classified staff as well. Um, and of course, you know, our staff here, um, who are here late with us. Um, and working incredibly hard every single day. So I just want to share that I'm just very appreciative of the things. I know that earlier I spoke about a deficiency that we have in our system, right? And at the same time with deficiencies that we have, I think that we have like thirty-five hundred employees who are working incredibly hard every single day in our system. Um, so I just want to appreciate that because um, as one of the biggest employers in this area, uh, we have some amazing people coming to work every single day. Uh, so thank you to all, all of you and thank you to our cabinet uh, for being here late and Dr. Hurst for your work.
Thank you so very much, Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy. Um, Director Forrest, could you please step to the podium for a minute, please? Director Forrest, it is your birthday.
Hello.
And we are going to sing happy birthday to you. And someone else has to start it because I have two versions running in my head and I can't, I have like the Stevie Runda version and then I have like the third grade kid version. So we're going to do the third grade kid version. So uh, Director Fleishman, you can start. Congratulations. And we're all going to sing and her name is going to be Ms. Forrest when we get to, we, we fill in the name. Go ahead, Director Fleishman.
Thank you.
You won.
President Smith Forrest. I want to see red lights, everybody all the way down. Red lights got to be on. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Yay. Are you one? Are you two? Are you three? Okay, we'll stop there. Thank you so much, Director Fleishman. Happy birthday, um, Director Forrest. We really appreciate you being here and all that you do for the district with communications. And um, it's just a fantastic job. To echo what Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy said, there's just not enough thank yous for the work that everybody does in this district. And it's, it's not easy, but it's, we're doing it, right? We are doing the work. There is a a livable, breathable shift in this district and it's because of the investment of all of your cabinet. You, Dr. Hurst, the majority of the board who is saying enough is enough and now we're going to change. So thank you to cabinet and staff and all that you do. Thank you to our translators. Thank you to our tech. Thank you to our C S S's that stay here with us. Thank you to Ms. Rosa. Thank you, Ms. Nancy. Thank you, Ms. Tennesse. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you to every teacher, every staff member, every student, every parent that is waking up and choosing us. Because there's a choice and we don't take it for granted that they could be anywhere, but they choose to be here. So we appreciate it. We are at nine fifty-seven. What? That's amazing. So we're at nine fifty-seven and we want to say thank you very much, everyone. Enjoy your night. The next scheduled board meeting is oh, we have a special meeting, sir. When's the special meeting? April seventeenth, I think, April seventeenth. And then we have another scheduled board meeting on April twenty-fourth at the uh, Dejawn Middle School. Come out on Saturday to the family engagement conference because it's going to be amazing. All right, everyone, we are dismissed and enjoy your night.